The order of the day, the opening of the year.
Adequate notice of this meeting was provided in accordance with Chapter 231 Public Law of 1975, Senator Byron and Mayor Urban Public Meeting, now.
For we have a moment of silence, so it's the holiday season, so there's less fortunate people, so. Commissioner Loes, the opening of the week.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just want to make a comment that for most of this year, our white folks didn't work, or a few of them did, few didn't, so I think all were fixed now, and it goes on, so hopefully people that are on the listening, hope that heroes better, so.
Commissioner Pearson.
Here.
Commissioner Musa.
Here.
Commissioner Capazola.
Here.
Commissioner Saleah.
Yes.
Commissioner Loes.
Here.
Deputy Director O'Narrow.
Here.
Director Auger.
Here.
Do I have a motion and second to accept the dispens for the reading of the minutes from the last public meeting? Do I have a motion?
So.
I'll second.
Loes, though.
All favor.
Aye. By email and memorandum dated December 5, 2023, the Highlands Commission notified the Board of County Commissioners of adoption on September 8, 2023, of Kirkwood to Hansi CMP water management amendments effective 12/4/2023. By email dated November 27, 2023, the Monmouth County Board of County Commissioners notified the Cumberland County Board of County Commissioners of a resolution adopted at the meeting of November 9, 2023, supporting $21 million in funding for the county 911 centers in the fiscal year 2024 state budget. In a letter dated December 12, 2023, the U.S. Department of Transportation Maritime Administration thanked the Board of County Commissioners for their efforts in assisting Yank Marine Services LLC concerning challenges Yank Marine face in utilization of the 2019 Small Shipyard Federal Grant.
We're going to do a few things tonight, a few presentations, and Commissioner Loes is going to be the first one to salute some of our board members.
Carol, Commissioner Musa.
On behalf of the Board of Commissioners, we want to present this to you in honor of your retirement from our Commissioner Board. We're going to miss you, but I do want to say something about your service. And as I reflect on my own service and what all of our service means, you know, in this, in our human life, we're meant to love, right? And if we don't do anything with that love, it never reaches its fullest expression. And the action that we take with our love is service. And I want to thank you for loving our county for the last 12 years.
I see you're a member, I see you're a member, I guess should be said, so. All years.
Commissioner Pearson.
Tears of pride. And I want to thank you as well for taking that love and turning it into service for our county. Can't thank you enough, and certainly through the wisdom on this board. We really very much appreciate you for breaking to the county. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Saleah.
So it won't blow away.
I'm going to bring it around with this place, so. So I have a proclamation for Cole the deaf dog, but I don't necessarily like that whole connotation of Cole the deaf dog. Cole is a wonderful, decent, serving animal for the people of this county. Cole, you do a wonderful job handling everybody easily and carefully and respectfully. You go to them and you love them. Now, I just want to explain a few things. I met Cole several years back in Millville, and I had a pit bull. And they have a very, very bad reputation. Yes, they are trained to be, you know, we'll call them, you know, dogs of attack, but they really are not. They're wonderful dogs. They're loving animals, as you can see right here. Now, Cole has been, he's amazing with his accomplishments. First of all, he's achieved many honors, including the Presidential Silver Service Award. That's named the top third B-dog in American Humane Hero Dog Competition. Is the first canine to receive the Phillies Star Teacher Award in 2019. He's also the official mascot for the New Jersey Veterans Memorial Home in Bylin, which is dear to my heart, as you know. Has also the, excuse me, on a military canine tag, he has a 2023 ASPCA Dog of the Hero Award as well. He goes on to do so many things. When he was a puppy, he's learned. I mean, Chris, literally, like that. He's amazing. The things he can do, and I think the Hannys also are amazing couple, because they have two other dogs that are becoming service animals, and they do a great job with Cole. Service you do within a community and within the state is amazing, and I just want to let you know that with Burke, right here. All right, you represent what the county really needs to be representing, service and love for the county. Here you go.
Well, not done yet, so. All right, I have a nice, it's Paul. Wait, do you want to come up to it? Just here, you're, come on, you're a team, so. The county, this is, I know you're not the longest-serving mayor in the county, because that's his father also. But I'll read this off, and I've seen a lot of resolutions and proclamations of my time, but this is very lengthy, so I'm just, as I go, this is the County of Cumberland's Proclamation honoring Mayor Paul Reeder III, who's retired. Whereas Mayor Paul J. Reeder III served the citizens of Hopewell Township and has held a position in various offices, first being appointed to Hopewell Township Zoning Board in 1993, then Hopewell Township Committee in 2002, appointed Deputy Mayor in Hopewell 2008 to 2020, and therefore appointed as Township esteemed Mayor. And whereas Mayor J. Paul Reeder III has endeavours of being Senior Vice President, Chief Financial Officer, and Corporate Secretary of Cumberland Mutual Fire Insurance Company, right down the road, Director of the Inspira Health Network Hospital Board, past President and former Vice President of the New Jersey Association of Mutual Insurance Companies, former Director of Colonial Bank Shares, and former Member Treasurer of Cumberland County Guidance Center Board of Trustees, former Treasurer of Hopewell Crest School Athletic Booster Club, and the Cumberland County Regional High School Athletic Booster Club also. Whereas Mayor J. Reeder III currently sits as the President and CEO of Cumberland Mutual Fire Insurance Company, Director of Century Savings Bank, is a member of the Cumberland County Economic Development Board, a member of the Board of Trustees by the M25 edition, a member of the CEO Group, a member and former Chairman of the Board of Directors of the Bridgeton Area Chamber of Commerce, a member and former Director of the Bridgeton Rotary Club, a member of St. Teresa's Roman Catholic Church, a member and former Solicitor of the Cumberland Development Corporation, a member of the Hopewell Township Economic Development Committee, a member of Cumberland County's Historic Society Board of Trustees, a member of the Georgetown Swim Club, where he formerly served as a Board of Trustees. Whereas Mayor Paul J. Reeder III has received numerous awards and recognition throughout the years, including the Cumberland County Distinguished Citizen Award, presented by the Garden State Council Boy Scouts of America, the Francis Binks Sharps Lifetime Achievement Award for the Bridgeton Area Chair of Commerce, and the Cumberland County Legends Award. He was named the Top CEO and CFO by South Jersey's Biz Magazine. Was also named Community Superhero by the County, by the Court Appointed Special Advocate of Cumberland Gloucester Salem County. Whereas Mayor Paul J. Reeder III has faithfully represented and promoted the town of Hopewell with its integrity and honor, and has applied the same level of commitment to serve and serve leadership to the broader community, bettering the lives of many through countless efforts and activities and projects, such as being instrumental in establishing the Hopewell's Park and Trails, the West Cumberland Senior Center, the expansion of the apartment building, the opening of the Amish Market in Hopewell Business Park, groundbreaking initiatives with Comcast to provide broadband service throughout Hopewell Township during the tender on the Township Committee. Whereas Mayor Paul J. Reeder III has faithfully performed the duties with dedication, diligence, and has been an exemplary role model and leader, as you can see all this stuff. Now, there's the, the proclamation by the Board of Commissioners of County Cumberland that the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners recognizes Mayor Paul J. Reeder for his countless contributions, dedication, loyalty, and service as residents of Hopewell Township and the County of Cumberland. For all you have done, we thank you and we wish you a fulfilling and enjoyable retirement.
Thank you so much.
I just want to thank the county officials. It's been a pleasure working with you over the years. We have a great Commissioners Board, and it's been helpful. And I'd be totally remiss, I couldn't accomplish a thing on that list without my wife, Wendy. All right, we're going to open up to a public comment on the resolutions on the agenda. We have a big chat.
An inversion second.
I have a motion and second. All favor. To open for a public comment, anyone would like to come up to the mic. You have five minutes. Just please state where your name and where you're from, and. All right, seeing nobody, our favorite person is away, so. Who are you talking about? Why I didn't go to date, so do you have anything?
No, Ms. Ridgeway has no questions on the agenda, so thank you.
Then would you, would you like to make any comments at all? Yes?
It's agenda items only, please.
Thank you.
Second.
I'll second.
All favor.
Aye.
All right, so we're going to start the consent of resolution. We have a, so are you ready?
Resolution 2023-837, resolution authorizing the sub-grant agreement with the Inspira Health Network for the FY21 Connect and Protect Law Enforcement Behavioral Health Response Program. Resolution 2023-840, resolution awarding fair and open contracts for providing property appraisal services for the County of Cumberland, RFP number 22-52. Resolution 2023-841, resolution awarding fair and open contracts for providing title insurance services for the County of Cumberland, RFP 23-53. Resolution 2023-842, resolution exercising second and final option to renew contracts for providing FY2021 Small Cities Housing Rehabilitation Program Administration Services for the County of Cumberland, RFP number 21-52. Resolution 2023-845, resolution authorizing purchase from the New Jersey State Contract Vendor for 1 APX 6,000, 2 APX 8,500, 3 APX 6,500, 3 APX 8,000, 4 APX 900, 700 MHD radios and accessories, and renter set, six pagers for Office of Emergency Management 9/11. Resolution 2023-846, resolution authorizing purchase from the New Jersey State Contract Vendor for network preventative maintenance level one, asterisk support on sire, infrastructure response standard, variant support for Cumberland County 911 Communications Center in accordance with the State Contract 1, NJCP-83909. Resolution 2023-847, resolution awarding contract for supplying and delivering gasoline and diesel fuel for County of Cumberland and the Cumberland County Cooperative Contract Pricing System Identifier Number 64CCCPs, bid number 23-5. Resolution 2023-849, resolution awarding fair and open contracts for providing drug and alcohol treatment services for the Cumberland County Alcohol and Drug Use Services Office, RFP number 23-61, and authorizing re-advertising for additional proposals for prevention services category. Resolution 2023-851, resolution amending Resolution 2022-684, a resolution exercising second and final option to renew contracts and approving change orders to contracts for providing various social services for the Cumberland County Youth Services Advisory Council, RFP number 20-62. Resolution 2023-852, resolution amending Resolution 2022-519, in order to accept a grant extension for the CY2023 Comprehensive County Youth Services Commission Plan and Application. 2023-853, resolution approving change order number one to professional service contract to conduct a preliminary assessment at Brigham County Park to construct a 5.2 mile permanent trail system, RFP number 23-24.
Just want, I just want to make a comment that by having this, we've also looking at, one of the key things about that park is that we got a portable, portable water from saying that have water, if we host events there, that the water is drinkable, and that will also be studied as part of that, so.
Resolution 2023-855, resolution setting the date, time, and place of the Cumberland County Board of County Commissioners' Annual Reorganizational Meeting. Resolution 2023-856, resolution authorizing the award of a non-fair and open contract for custom fabrication of fire academy burn containers used for fire training. Resolution 2023-857, resolution declaring surplus and unneeded property and authorizing transfer of titles to the City of Millville for 2006 Chevy Impala, 117,416 miles, bid number 2FZ6MLVB9YAB17290, asset number 7838, and 2009 Chevy Silverado Utility Truck, 198,501 miles, bid number 1GBH-C44K19F179287, asset number 7958. Resolution 2023-858, resolution authorizing the award of a non-fair and open contract for cameras, SAR and SSRT programs, two SDFI cameras, one for each set used by the forensic nurses. Resolution 2023-859, resolution authorizing an application for renewal of the grant agreement between the Cumberland County Office on Aging and Disabled and the New Jersey Department of Human Services Commission for the Blind and Visually Impaired for calendar year 2024. Resolution 2023-860, resolution authorizing a 2024 sub-grant to the Margaret Winchester Enrichment Center for the Blind and Visually Impaired through the Cumberland County Office of Aging and Disabled. Resolution 2023-861, resolution amending 2023-599, resolution authorized the Cumberland County Department of Human Service and Division of Employment and Training to provide youth service programs funded by the Juvenile Justice Commission. Resolution 2023-862, resolution authorizing the award of a non-fair and open contract to provide annual technical maintenance, support, and enhancement for the D365 proprietary software system for the Cumberland County Division of Social Services. Resolution 2023-864, resolution authorizing the use of competitive contracting for receipt of RFPs for providing in-school, in-school youth industry-focused occupational training internship program services for Cape May County. Resolution 2023-865, resolution authorizing the use of competitive contracting for receipt of RFPs for providing out-of-school youth industry-focused occupational training internship program services for Salem County and Cape May County. Resolution 2023-866, resolution authorizing purchase from Omni Partners Contract Number RTC17006, authorized participation in the Prince William County Public Schools, Virginia Contract for Online Marketplace Number RTC17006, U.S. Communities National Contract Vendor for Computer Parts/Accessories and Phone Accessories. Resolution 2023-867, resolution canceling expired grant balances. Resolution 2023-868, resolution authorizing a grant application and execution of a grant agreement with the New Jersey Department of Transportation for the FY2024 LFIF Road Program CR666 Project. Resolution 2023-869, resolution approving change order number one to contract for construction services, construction service support for replacement of Mayor Aiken Bridge, 0600-030CR697 across Sunset Raceway, pre-qualified per RFP number 18-62, as needed general architect and engineering services awarded by Resolution 2018-691, November 27, 2018. Resolution 2023-870, resolution approving change order number two to contract for specifications for the replacement of Bridge number 0600-0300, Mayor Aiken Drive over Sunset Lake Raceway, City of Bridgeton, Cumberland County, New Jersey, bid number 21-51. Resolution 2023-871, resolution approving change order number one and final to contract for specifications for the 2022 Local Freight Impact Fund Group Program Townships of Commercial, Hopewell, and Upper Deerfield, Cumberland County, New Jersey, bid number 23-02. Resolution 2023-872, resolution approving change order number one to contract for the Rowan Medicine Building site work. Resolution 2023-873, resolution authorizing purchase from the New Jersey State Contract Vendor for live identity scan system for the Sheriff's Office. Resolution 2023-874, resolution canceling expired contracts for December 2023 covering materials, services, and supplies. Resolution 2023-875, resolution authorizing purchases from state contract vendors. Resolution 2023-876, resolution authorizing the award of a non-fair and open contract for the provision of ISACURE Gold Annual Predestelaton Maintenance Plan. Resolution 2023-877, resolution authorizing budget transfer 2023-02. Resolution 2023-878, resolution authorizing purchases from the New Jersey State Contract Vendor for furniture for the Rowan Medicine Building at Rowan College of South Jersey. Resolution 2023-879, resolution authorizing purchase from the New Jersey State Contract Vendor for the purchase of furniture for the Rowan Medicine Building at Rowan College of South Jersey.
Just want to make a comment on, we've had three of those resolutions about the Rowan Medicine Building, Rowan College of South Jersey. Right now, actually, we're told that we are now, we should be under a little over $800,000 less than was budgeted for the original building of that building, which I'll credit this board, I'll actually credit this staff here. It was built by the CCIA, but I'll say that we're working together, they did our building, we sparred it out to them as usual, but the accomplishment of being under budget and doing, I think the staff, the administration should have, should be commended, thanks for the right word, commended for what they did and to make sure we was, that we were on top of that the whole way. So that was the third thing, their IDC buying and this, but in the end, the numbers make a lot of sense, so, thanks.
Resolution 2023-880, resolution exercising second and final option to renew contract for providing on-site catering services for the County of Cumberland and the Cumberland County Cooperative Contract Purchasing System Identifier Number 181-CCCCPS, bid number 21-73. Resolution 2023-881, resolution authorizing and identifying account signers for the Cumberland County Sheriff's Office Revenue Extraditions and Subpoena Bank Accounts at New Deal Bank. Resolution 2023-884, resolution authorizing shared service agreement with the County, Salem County Vacation Technical School with respect to the provision of adult basic skills programs.
Just want to point out that also, as I commend Salem County, we have Salem County Commissioner DeRouze, that this is another, a shared opportunity that Salem County and Cumberland has done. You're going to see another two on this, or one on this tonight, but this is where we have common needs, they, we have, Salem County has a skill, we're bringing them in to help us meet our needs with our county jail, and vice versa, if there are things they need, we're going to do the same thing, so.
Resolution 2023-885, resolution authorizing shared services agreement with Rowan College of South Jersey with respect to the provision of educational services oversight in the Cumberland County Department of Corrections. Resolution 2023-886, resolution requesting commission for the dedication by Ryder for a short recovery trust fund as required by NJSA 40A, code in 4-62.1. Resolution 2023-887, resolution authorizing shared services agreement with the City of Salem to provide senior citizens male assistance. Resolution 2023-888, resolution authorizing shared services agreement with the City of Bylin to provide senior citizens male assistance. Resolution 2023-889, resolution granting final approval of the Brooks Farm Application Cell Development Easement. Resolution 2023-890, resolution authorizing award of historical sub-grants from the Cumberland County Cultural and Heritage Commission for calendar year 2024. Resolution 2023-891, resolution authorizing award of sub-grants from the Cumberland County Cultural and Heritage Commission block grant for calendar year 2024. Resolution 2023-892, resolution amending Resolution 2022-768, authorizing agreement with Gateway Community Action Partnership for outreach service reimbursement to the Office of Aging and Disabled. Resolution 2023-893, resolution authorizing purchase from the New Jersey State Contract Vendor for network APX 6,000 portable model, 2.5 with accessories, and APX 4,500 remote mount for the Office of Emergency Management. Resolution 2023-894, resolution approving change order number one to contract for providing various medical services for the Cumberland County Department of Corrections. Resolution 2023-895, resolution authorizing agreement with the New Jersey State Contract Vendor for lease of Canon Image Runner DX6860I copiers with accessories, and Canon Image Runner DX-C5860 copier with accessories for the County Division of Employment and Training. Resolution 2023-896, resolution authorizing a shared service agreement between the County of Cumberland and participating governing bodies for the use of camera truck.
This is a, just a comment that this board has proceeded to do shared services to our townships and our cities where we thought that we could help, and this is the third one we've developed, and this will apply to not just a camera truck, but any vehicle that we have that we think we can help with a need that, this shared service for the city will help them a lot, but also our other two shared services we will talk about a little later, so.
Resolution 2023-897, resolution authorizing memorandum of understanding between the County of Cumberland and the County of Salem for the provision of creation of a regional correctional facility.
You, you'll see two back to back, and we're, it is, this is the, as Mr. Ridgeway asked last meeting, this is the culmination of. last meeting, this is the culmination of months of pulling together, and again, I commend the staff for pulling this and this memorandum of understanding together. Cumberland led the way as far as development, the concept that we're going towards, and Salem has been a heck of a partner the whole way as far as that we we are partners, where this is not a shared service agreement, it's an understanding we're going to create if it's adopted, this board adopts it, this commission adopts it, and Salem has already adopted it, we're going to create a we're going to start this year coming up, the development of this joint body to create the structure that will establish the whatever it's going to be called, the we'll just say the joint body for now, and Salem it's the Salem Jail, and we will eventually build onto that jail to house our inmates and bring all our inmates back to within 20, 25 minutes from Cumberland. So it is the beginning it is not the beginning, it's the beginning the formalized beginning of this this whole structure, the start of it. So you can read the next one, and I'll have to say it real quick, oh, you might as well read it first.
Resolution 2023-898. Resolution authorizing memorandum of understanding between the County of Cumberland, the County of Salem, and the County of Gloucester for the provision of creation of a regional correctional facility.
Again, if this board votes on it, this includes Gloucester is actually voting tomorrow, I vote this tomorrow, and they're deciding if they're going to join this. The biggest asset is that the county, the court district is Cumberland, Salem, and Gloucester. That's what makes it such a great thing if they also will join. Right now, they haven't agreed with Salem, but they will build another wing onto that jail, and their inmates will be housed there also. It will take some take a little time, they're working with this to allow some of our inmates to go there to help us, help us relieve some pressure we have because our inmates are five hours away round trip, and which is very tough, but they're working on stuff also. So I'm very pleased, we are taking the precaution that it may just be us, us and Salem, but I'm hopeful that it'll be Salem, Cumberland, and Gloucester involved in the best of all worlds, so.
So the two resolutions are on here tonight, so whichever we're approving these two resolutions, depending on what happens with Gloucester County, so if Gloucester goes in, then the county is in with Gloucester. If they don't, then it's just Salem. So two resolutions, one will be thrown in the trash can if it doesn't work.
Correct.
Oh, I just wanted to make that clear because, you know, we have feelings about the second one, and hopefully, you know, it'll work out, okay.
And I said, Commissioner Pearson made the point very clear, I at the beginning, I didn't really care about Gloucester at all, but they've come to the table, and they were very open to it, they saw the numbers work, they saw how Salem was presenting it, and their commissioners seemed to be very receptive to it. I can't know if they're going to vote, how they're going to vote, but I'll give you we're required to build at the original number 17 million dollar addition to the courthouse. Well, if we build this, and there might be a courtroom in this building, maybe we save 17 million dollars, maybe, I believe we have some, but we may save money if we don't have to build onto our courthouse. I want to make that effort, doesn't mean it's I planted the seed, it doesn't mean it's going to happen, but we are we're going to build next onto that, hopefully, we don't have to do that if we build a room in the Gloucester, in the Salem County jail. So that's what I'm hoping, that maybe we'll save a lot of money, so. So and I hope the board will agree to these two memorandums.
Resolution 2023-900. Resolution authorizing increase of monetary ceiling for legal expenses in the litigation matter of Brown v. Clark et al. versus Charles Warren, U.S. District Court, Docket Number Resolution 2023-901. Resolution approving change order number one to contract for commissary services for the Cumberland County Department of Corrections, RFP number 22-05. Resolution 2023-902. Resolution according Cumberland County Fire Marshal. Resolution 2023-903. Resolution authorizing payment of bills.
Can I ask a question? I have a question about Resolution 2023-884 regarding the shared service with Salem County Vocational Technical School and the county jail. Who I should direct that to, you, Ms. Ralmon?
Mr. That would probably need to direct her up. He can carry it down.
Okay, so I do have a question about what Salem County is agreeing to provide, they're providing a part-time instructor at our county facility.
Yes, hi, Director Albino from the Department of Corrections. It's really has been we've been working on this for months, and it's really a joint effort, and you see the resolutions are back to back between Rowan College of South Jersey and Salem County's Vocational and Technical School. The Assistant Superintendent of Salem County's Vocational and Tech oversees a it's a Department of Labor grant, and that's the funding source, and it's actually they oversee the grant not just for Salem County, but Salem, Cumberland, and Cape May Counties, and they had some money, and county administration fed them to me. In the meantime, the director and I had been working jointly with Dr. Keating from from Rowan in order to get this together, and what we've done now is that's all come together. As a matter of fact, I can report to the board that I got I was in touch with the individual from Salem that oversees that grant, and she said their their board actually met last night, and they actually approved this and already hired the teacher.
Okay.
So the teacher will come for us at no cost to the county, it's funded out of this grant.
And they're going to come to our facility here in Berchtesgaden?
They oh, yeah, this is going to be I think it will be a teacher that works part-time at the jail to develop a program. As a matter of fact, it's not just going to be adult basic education, but we're also going to do ServSafe, which is for food service, so we're going to do a small vocational program. It's a little difficult to get a real heavy vocational program going into prison, and I'm really happy and pleased with how this developed because we really haven't had any educational program here in the county since I think 2021.
Absolutely, so I'm very excited to see that that's returning. I'm just I'm curious as to if the residents that are in Hudson will be served, or if it's just your.
No, it's just it's our teacher would be just here, but Hudson has their own educational program, so our our incarcerated persons that are there can take advantage of the services there, but.
And the college aspect of this is to provide even some college courses credit possibly in the future, that's the work that's being done with President Keith.
Definitely. For here, all the way all the way up to maybe.
Yeah, I mean, this has been a month, months and months long effort, we're even looking at Rowan perhaps giving offering educational opportunities to to my staff at a discounted rate as well, so it may not it may go beyond that. It's really a great partnership, I'm really happy with.
I know I've discussed this with Dr. Keating, so I want to commend you for making this happen.
No, it's my pleasure.
I just want to make sure that, you know, all those things are coming.
No, it's all for here, and from what I I met actually with Salem today, dropped off the original of their agreement today, and we expect to actually go live and start teaching classes first week in February, so this is.
Is it is it virtual, or is there?
No, no, this teacher will be onsite and teaching at the jail.
Space at the jail.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay, that is conducive for.
For a teacher, absolutely.
It's a classroom.
Yeah, there is a classroom.
And we thank Salem for their cooperation.
Absolutely.
Very good.
Anything else?
Thank you, Director.
We're going to pause for a second, just to dial the air.
Your meeting organizer, press star now.
Can I ask you one more question? Can I ask you one more question? I was reading something, and the these.
You are now joining the unit.
Sorry. Resolution 2023-901.
Please wait for the leader to adjudge.
Are we good now? All right, so 901, it's almost $32,000 for these, I guess they're tablets, is that for there's commissary, I guess, so.
I'll explain that, that's a that's another thing that I've been working on probably since April. We we had a there was a tablet program that was an agreement when I took over. What we found out was the tablet program really wasn't going to serve the population. It was when the county was contemplating taking the jail down to just being a hub, it only called for 30 tablets, it called for very limited Wi-Fi coverage, so I kind of they were actually onsite.
I was about to add here, when you took me on the tour, there were tablets already there.
Yes, and you could see they were not functional, but you could see the Wi-Fi connections, but it wasn't done. Well, after months and months of negotiation, we finally came, I had to get them to bring the program up to what would be useful for the for the offender population, otherwise there was no point in having it, but we really wanted the program. So we finally, after months and months of negotiation, got to the point where they were able to fund most of it, and there was a 31,956 difference, and we're able to fund that out of the it won't be any cost to the county out of the operating budget, we that will fund exclusively out of our inmate welfare account.
Okay.
So and that's something else that should be coming in January as well, so it's been a good one, so.
Anything else?
Thank you for that. I just need that.
Two tablets I saw.
I have to stay from eight five six.
Since your pause, I also want to say that this, I don't know if you've heard, that we and on top of I'm going to commend the director and our business administrator that we this is how far the jail has come, we were COVID is still present, and it was at it's now it was present in Hudson County, and we were receiving inmates that may have been or tested positive, and instead of doing our normal, I'd say the normal way it was done, our instead, our administration and our director reacted to figure out what to do, and they made a decision to stop the transfer of Hudson inmates back to us, our inmates, to prevent spread. I'll just say that very professional, very well done, and all over Bob, and all forgetting names of where Bob, I think, this our prosecutor, Mr. Jeffrey McCray, who was involved, was also part of that decision-making process, and it's I I really appreciate that, this is how far we've come, and here we are, and I really commend the director for his actions, and it bodes well, you see the educational program starting up, there are other things he's going to implement, and you I just want to say to Commissioner Salem that you see that what will come is come, and where we think we can go, that we've taken a problem, we've tackled it, it's not done, it's a work in progress, but we'll continue to do as best we can to move forward, so.
Do I have a motion in second to vote by consent agenda on Resolutions 2023-837 through 2023-903, except Resolutions 2023-838, 839, 843, 844, 848, 850, 854, 863, 882, 883, 899?
Second.
All in favor? Okay, the reader.
Commissioner Pearson.
Yes.
Commissioner Russo.
Yes.
Commissioner Capazola.
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo.
Yes.
Commissioner Ludes.
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero.
Yes.
Director Albert.
Yes.
Do I have a motion in second to adopt Resolutions 2023-837 through 2023-903 by consent, except Resolutions 2023-838, 839, 843, 844, 848, 820, 850, 2023, 850, 854, 863, 882, 883, and 899? Do I have a motion in second?
So, second.
Commissioner Pearson.
Yes.
Commissioner Russo.
Yes.
Commissioner Capazola.
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo.
Yes.
Commissioner Ludes.
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero.
Yes.
Director Albert. Resolutions 2023-838. Resolution awarding fair and open contract for providing bargaining services for the County of Cumberland, RFP number 23-49. Do I have a motion in second?
Submit.
Second.
Commissioner Pearson.
Yes.
Commissioner Russo.
Yes.
Commissioner Capazola.
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo.
Yes.
Commissioner Ludes.
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero.
Yes.
Director Albert.
I had this pulled off the consent agenda because I right now of this, we are have two choices, both and I know details, but I both have dealt with, we just voted the company, which is a very fine company, but there've been there's a $56,000 difference in $57,000 difference in price, and I thought this is a perfect example where if I make a change from one auditor to the other, both very qualified, we could save, I mean, it's not it's a penny, it's not even a penny, it's a fraction of what our budget is, but you got to start somewhere, and I thought this would be a place we should have thought of that. So we have so I I want to vote that I think we should have considered the Ford Scott auditors, which they were unviolent, I was counsel, we brought them in dead, they did a fine job for the county, I don't know if they're still in the city of violence or what, but they did a fine job, and we were there, and I would have voted them out if they did, that's they give them a year, and our people believe that they did a good job on that, so.
Yes or no? Resolution 2023-839. Resolution awarding fair and open contract for providing employee benefit brokerage services, RFP 23-33, resubmission. Do I have a motion in second?
So.
Second.
Commissioner Pearson.
Yes.
Commissioner Russo.
Yes.
Commissioner Capazola.
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo.
Yes.
Commissioner Ludes.
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero.
Yes.
Director Albert.
At the time that I've had this pulled off, I had questions because we did have some people that were bidding much lower than again, another great organization out, Associates, they're local, asked a lot of questions, I believe actually were making the wrong choice, so I'm going to say yes for this one, so.
Resolution 2023-843. Resolution exercising second and final option to renew contract for providing FFY 2021 Small Cities Housing Rehabilitation License Septic Engineering Services for the County of Cumberland, RFP number 21-53. Do I have a motion in second?
So. I'll second.
Commissioner Pearson.
Yes.
Commissioner Russo.
Yes.
Commissioner Capazola.
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo.
Yes.
Commissioner Ludes.
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero.
Yes.
Director Albert.
The comment is that we originally, I thought we actually brought in other companies to so we would have other choices, not just this is again, another new company, another local company, no problem with that, but we actually had other choices so we could actually that I thought we had a group of vendors on this, and I see there's only one, get it?
Yeah. This one's tied to a specific grant program.
Okay, that's what they're doing.
We have one more year left in the grant, it's the one where low-income applicants can apply for a loan to approve their house, this one's specifically for septic systems, so they had applied to be our engineer for assisting in that, so that's why this one's separate from the other.
In the future, since we have our a point, could they all be used for different grants that we apply?
Depends on the grants, so this one required us to RFP for competitive contracting process, so there's always going to be one in under that, but so yeah, it maybe depends on what the grant is.
All right, so, all right, yes.
Resolution 2023-844. Resolution authorizing grant application and acceptance of the FFY 2023 Building Resilient Infrastructure and Communities Grant Program. Do I have a motion in second?
So.
Second.
Commissioner Pearson.
Yes.
Commissioner Russo.
Yes.
Commissioner Capazola.
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo.
Yes.
Commissioner Ludes.
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero.
Yes.
Director Albert.
The this is a question on the. This is a question on the dollar match, is that actual dollars or that says, it says each card?
And so it's not the additional cash match, but it's things that were already provided, so it's a.
So it's 150,000, and they're, so just eight, okay. So yes.
Resolution 2023-848, resolution authorizing purchase from cooperative contract vendor for renewal of Swift 9/11 annual software subscription for the Office of Emergency Management in accordance with the New Jersey Cooperative Purchasing Alliance. Do I have a motion in second?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Russo?
Yes.
Commissioner Capazola?
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo?
Yes.
Commissioner Ludes?
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero?
Yes.
Director Albert?
I think gave us the, yeah, could use to step, this is actually not just this one, there's several, we just passed. Or all these, we spent a lot of money on the 901 system and the 700 system. We bought a lot of equipment over time. Is this special equipment or new stuff we're doing? I've not just heard that we did some other things today.
So if you're talking about the radios that were into consent, one, one purchase is through the Radiological Emergency Response Program, and that is for the people that are involved in that program, who do the work protection program and all that stuff. So that's all communication equipment that's funded through the state for that. The larger purchase of the radios was for equipment that we had to use out of the larger project for the jail when we had the issue with, safety issue with communications in the building. So that's to replenish what we put out for that. This RAVE is the messaging system that we use for the county that's funded through Homeland Security. And that might, that's used by the county, if there's an emergency, we can put out an emergency notification. We also use it, DOS is using it, Prosecutor's Office uses it for notifying members of our staff.
That's, that's this one right here?
Yeah.
The RAVE. Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-850, resolution awarding contract for supplying and delivering number two fuel oil for the County of Cumberland and for participating members of Cumberland County Cooperative Contract Pricing System identifier number 64-CCCPS, CCCPS, bid number 23-58. Do I have a motion in second?
So moved. Second.
Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Russo?
Yes.
Commissioner Capazola?
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo?
Yes.
Commissioner Ludes?
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero?
Yes.
Director Albert?
I guess before, Jeff, I guess this is on the order, I, the, there's two resolutions on this, that oil, gas, what, Ringens is doing one, and Wooders doing the other, do they, do we normally, maybe we can't put it out in one, and what supplies it, or is this, why is the logic approach?
We separated it out, so the Ringens, one, they supply our fuel facility, and this one, as far as fuel oil, this isn't something that we necessarily distribute, but it's available to all members of the cooperative, so like if, for both townships and members, they can purchase fuel oil directly from Wooders.
Through us or through, or just?
No, directly through Wooders, so they can contract. Then we do something similar with like Rock Salt, where we, they have buying power on behalf of all of the other cooperative members, so we get a contract for Rock Salt at a certain price per ton, then other tiered township can then buy it at that same price. So working together, we've kind of lowered costs for everyone.
All right, yes.
Resolution 2023-854, resolution approving change order number one to contract for providing various medical laboratory testing services for the County of Cumberland, RFP number 22-01. Do I have a motion in second?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Russo?
Yes.
Commissioner Capazola?
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo?
Yes.
Commissioner Ludes?
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero?
Yes.
Director Albert?
This is another question, that we're going, we're renewing the contract with LabCorp. I know it's necessary, but the increase of $166,000 or 75% more. Question I asked is that, because COVID's kind of weighed, that there might be actually other labs that might want to bid and put it out there, that maybe we'd get a better price, that, was it ever considered at all, to put it out there?
When we originally put it out, we had a little bit of issue getting people to sign on. I'm sure that probably has waned, so if the commissioners decide, we can put it out again, that's no problem. But when we reach out, they didn't have any price increases, so we figured if the Department of Corrections is interested in retaining him, and they're interested in staying on, it saves us at least the time of, the staff time of putting out another solicitation, if we may not necessarily do a better deal. But that's the risk. So if the board decides, instead of renewing, we could extend current to give us time to RFP again, but this is our last renewal anyway, so in a year, we're going to be doing it all the same.
All right, so, yes.
Resolution 2023-863, resolution exercising second and final option to renew contract for various medical laboratory testing services for the County of Cumberland, RFP number 22-01.
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Russo?
Yes.
Commissioner Capazola?
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo?
Yes.
Commissioner Ludes?
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero?
Yes.
Director Albert?
Yes.
Resolution 2023-882, resolution rescinding resolution 2022-218 and terminating agreement with the City of Bridgeton for the use of site known as the Southern New Jersey All-Sports Museum and Hall of Fame of Bridgeton. Do I have a motion in second?
Question. I didn't see the attached paper here for, so what is, I'm not sure what this means or what it's about.
Oh, go look it, but I didn't see it.
It's a meal program, right, Barbara? The Bridgeton Hall of Fame Building?
Okay.
Hi, Reverend Nedehan, Director of the Office on Aging. Yes, this is an agreement we had with the city to, where we did our Meals on Wheels program to, we got the meals in bulk, we separated for our drivers. When the site closed down for repairs, we found another county location to do it, which was much more convenient and efficient for our staff, because it is such a tiny staff of people. And the Health Department assessed it and said we can stay where we're at. So this agreement gives us exclusive use of the room for part of the day, and with us not needing that space, then there's no reason that we, you know, to have exclusive use, so that way they can open it up for anything the city or the Hall of Fame group wants to do. We also did use that space for, that was a Bridgeton luncheon site as well, but no one from Bridgeton area has been using that location for luncheon program, so we were just using it for Meals on Wheels distribution.
Okay, all right, thank you for explaining that.
Okay.
Now it makes sense.
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Russo?
Yes.
Commissioner Capazola?
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo?
Yes.
Commissioner Ludes?
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero?
Yes.
Director Albert?
Yes.
Resolution 2023-833, resolution approving 2024 titles and annual salaries for employees not affiliated with collective bargaining agreement in accordance with Civil Service Regulations NJAC 4A:3-4. Do I have a motion in second?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Russo?
Yes.
Commissioner Capazola?
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo?
Yes.
Commissioner Ludes?
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero?
Yes.
Director Albert?
A couple questions, the, just one second, everyone.
They went all beginning on a question.
Welcome to the Audio Conference Center. Please enter a conference ID, followed by pound.
Thanks, it's messy, I'm sorry.
If you're meeting organizer, press star now.
I'm trying to make that joke earlier.
All right, this, two things, you mentioned that in this, that this is like a.
Now joining the meeting.
Is this, this is a decision by the board?
You're now joining the meeting.
This is a decision that we make, that we decide, this commission's decide, okay. It's, it's not automatic. Go ahead. That, I just want to make sure, it would sound like this was like, you had decided upon the state regulations that this is.
Oh, yeah, so the commissioners, your salaries are based on a certain statute, prosecutor and the other constitutional officer are on a different set of statutes, and, yeah, so it gets bogged down with those references, but it is the discretion of the board law for vulnerability.
And have we done this every year in the past, or only, is there certain?
For as long as I've been here, yes, I'm sure, if I dug back the 12 years, especially during the recession, that abandoned forhood, but back here for four years.
Well, there are justifications that all the units, most of the units get increases yearly, well, some of them have to wait till they're negotiated, new balance. I, you know, looking at, somewhere, when we're looking at the budget, there has to be some kind of, sometimes you have to pause, and, yeah, the upper management, which I guess most of this is upper management, that's a raw subject, I saw a lot of times.
Confidentialty, like, some of my payroll clerks, or social services payroll clerks, so it's not.
They're not part of any bargaining unit?
Right, because they're confidential in nature, so this is the work that they do, so it wouldn't make sense that they would be in a regular bargaining unit. So it depends on the title.
Well, you know, Cumberland is one of those counties where you don't make a million dollars and retire rich, working for the county. But I think there are a lot of people here who really work hard under the radar, and they aren't protected by the civil services or by union, and they do a lot of work, and these are the people that, and this is just my opinion, I just don't have any issue with we, as a board, can compensate them for the overtime and much of the work that they do, this makes sense. They don't have the kind of representation that some of the other employees do, so.
I wanted to make a comment, so, and this is just an example, and this decision is the title of the board, but benefit costs go up, so their Chapter 78 contributions for medical withholdings go up, so if no increase happens, then their net paycheck is going down.
Going down.
Well, that's fine, I hear, I heard everything, because I've asked you this question, you give me the answer to it, that there are a lot of people that are out there, that a lot that have jobs that are not government, that don't get automatic raises, do still pay their health insurance, pay pieces of it. So, it may not be automatic, but you basically tell me it's automatic, so.
It's the title, if you.
I know, I'll be, I get you, I tell you, I got it.
That's what I'm getting at.
Commissioner Director, the only thing I was thinking here is, in order to maintain good people, we need to facilitate good salaries, and you've yourself said, I've said in the past, about Sheriff's Department beating the pay and so forth and so on. So I'm just saying that, in order to maintain employees of good caliber, we need to pay them at least a responsible financial compensation.
And you have a lot of long-term employees that.
I understand, I understand, I get, I get, and I know that you're talking about, some of those people you talk about are very well, the pay is very low, but I get it, so just make the point that sometimes you have, you're going to have to say, no, maybe we're not going to do it today, but this is the place, and we don't, we don't get a lot of checks and balances with the, with the unions. We make an agreement, we have to, whatever we make with the agreement, we have to honor, which we do, and sometimes there are people that we bring on, or we have, that we have to sometimes say, no, all right. In this case, I'll go with the rest of everybody else, but this for future, that if we're going to have to rein in the budget, these are the places that we have to look at, and they're the people that's separate, and they could move on if they wanted to, we're going to lose some good people, but they get good, there's a lot of good things to be part of this government, and be part of it is the benefits, so. All right, thank you, let's, yes.
Resolution 2023-899, resolution consenting to the Cumberland County Improvement Authority awarding contract for the Rowan Medicine Building Counter System on behalf of the County of Cumberland. Do I have a motion in second?
So moved. I'll second.
Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Russo?
Yes.
Commissioner Capazola?
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo?
Yes.
Commissioner Ludes?
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero?
Yes.
Director Albert?
Question, why, why is this being, the CCIA has bought, has basically done everything for this building, why is the weekend?
We've, we've directly contracted for the majority of the expenses for the project, so while they may do the bidding on behalf of us, we're the ones that ultimately are engaging in the contractors. This one particularly is through the Camden Educational Services Commission co-op, so we're not a member of that yet, I want to put a, become a member in that, so that makes more available contracts that we could use, but the authority is a member, so to save time, I figured we could go through them.
Is there any other cooperative we belong to that has capital companies off? Nobody. All the cooperates bought it. I see Prince George's Virginia were involved in something.
So this is also going towards the colleges standard, because it's on the college campus, we want them all to be interlinked, so then the security team can review.
So all were CM3 on our college campus.
That's what I've been about, so.
The reason why I'm making, yeah, the reason why I'm making this point, because this company's come up before, and it seems to be the same company all the time, and that it would be nice in the future that we have some choices of this. All right, yes.
We had originally, only in the quarter, unfortunately.
I, I, I wonder what the CC10 is, that is also.
At the direction of the director, resolutions 2023-817 and 820 will come from the November 28th agenda meeting. At the direction of the director, resolutions 2023-817 and 2023-820 are being added back onto this agenda, and will be read and driven on separately.
Before we get started, I just want to make the point that last, two weeks ago, I had pulled off this, this off the agenda, and I kind of relied that we have another board coming in, it would be their decision to push forward on this, this consulting engineer and also the grants coordinator. The reason why I kind of put this back on is that I believe that in order to make a decision, maybe I'm a late person, that doesn't know, doesn't know everything, I've been looking at for eight months, and every member is, is really no expert, no expert on the, this middle mile, and the reason why we're bringing this, the most important part is the consulting engineer, is that we wanted to bring someone on that could be over our shoulder, to give us their input, their expertise, and we think we found somebody, where we interviewed, I think Tektronix is whatever the name of the company, we felt comfortable with, which was kind of, I think it was unanimous, and we would, and I thought, well, if they're going to make a decision, or if they're going to, this board, the next board's going to make a decision on this project, maybe they should have some expert input into that process. Someone has looked at only this project, but also their main task is to look at our engineers, the design, that will design over the next six months. So to make rational decisions or look into this project to make it happen, they need to have, they could have some expertise they could use to make that decision. I will say this, and again, I'll say this before, that this county has a communication issue, it was very prevalent during COVID. It, to rely, and I'm a very big, the private industry, we, but this is an infrastructure project, government does this very well, there's a hole that's been there forever. There's a hole. It's been there forever. I've said over and over again that there's a, the highway, this is a highway. We would build a highway if we needed to. We built fifty-five. This communication is the highway to the future. This county is behind. My son is coming back, is in school, and someone said to me that he probably won't come here, won't settle in Cumberland County. Well, if what he wants to do and what he does as a kid is to, is use communication, just like we do all the time, they're probably much better at it. They're not gonna look at Cumberland County. They're not gonna look at Salem County, because if we can't, if they can't communicate, they're not bringing their business here. They're not bringing their family here. And, and our education suffers, will suffer. It suffers now, but it'll suffer in the future because it can't keep up. Our business community, they're not gonna look. We have our locals, open business, facilities in business. They won't look here because in overall, they need to communicate. They're gonna bring their, their headquarters and bring their business here to grow. They need to communicate worldwide. They can't do it from Cumberland County. They can't do it from Salem. And, and the same, yeah, there is either environment. We have communication. I have choice. I, I got FiOS and Verizon hooked on the very day we accepted the grant. Verizon hooked up after eight years, they hooked up fiber optics to my store. I was like, on the same day we voted for it, we received it. So what changed? What changed? They decided to come down my street today? No, we voted on it. That's what I consider to change. So I, I, all day, not all day, probably eight months, we go back and forth and talking about with administration. We partner, we talk, we bet with people, we decide a plan, we bet with our counterparts, we've been talking, how many meetings? They have two meetings a week, these NTIA people have with us. Two meetings a week, they call, that we are trying to push us through this program to keep us on track. I, and what we're, we're getting money that we would never, ever raise in this chamber, be able to afford to do what we're gonna do. A thirty-four billion dollar project, thirty-one, thirty-four billion dollar project, taking in eight kinds of services. The county in Cumberland, from money we put aside from a bond that we did years ago, or four point seven billion dollars we put aside. So for four point seven billion dollars, we're spending, we're getting a thirty-four billion dollar investment in an area that we're, that we're hurting in, which is communication, that we couldn't upgrade ourselves. And I'll say to them, I say, well, we got Comcast, we got Verizon, we got whatever company, they're, they're doing. Well, they're here. But are they doing it? When I drive all over this county, all over this county, there, I go into areas and it's, I have no cell coverage. And you say, people said, this doesn't, this doesn't entail cell coverage. Yes, it does. Towers need fiber optics to, to work. So we can't have these work, and these are basics. In areas in this county, and I say this county, I'm talking about Salem also, just lights out. They can't talk. I've been in my house and I can't talk to people and I've been fine. So how, what do we do to change? How, what other alternative do we have to figure out to get better, to move forward? That, maybe I'm over, I, drives me nuts and I apologize to my colleagues because they've seen me go off, but that's how important it is to move forward, to try something. I've always said, we have to try. It, it may not work. I'll, I'll be the first person to jump up, this don't work. Oh, yeah, no, we spent, yeah, we spent four point, we spent four point seven billion dollars to try something that gets twenty to thirty years ahead of where we're at now. And maybe, just maybe, my son might decide, yeah, this is a place I can do something in. That, right now, that's not a possibility. And I say, my son, other, other people, grandson may down the road decide to stay here because it, it has opportunity. Cumberland County, Salem County are beautiful areas. It's, it's a great place to live. That's why I came back here. It's a great place to live. It has all, it has everything. We walk out, we're in the woods. It's green. It's, we got trees, it's shady. We have good people. We, we have industry, we have enough industry to do what we have to do. But we could be better. And, and people may not want to come here. Our spend, well, here's the biggest thing. Our ratables are not as high as it could be, which lowers taxes when ratables are higher, are not as good as it could be because there's maybe not good communication. Sit down in Cedarville, type it on their porch, on their computer, because they can't do it, because they can't, they have no communication. I spent the last year, more than the year, but this last year, talking about this, but I've also been talking about some of the sewer and water projects, our, our Nab Avenue Extension, and, and why I bring them up, because they're infrastructure, they're keys to us being better, to be able to have a toilet when our people come down to visit this lighthouse or go to our historic sites, agree with you, they would like to wash their hands or go to the toilet. We can't even do that. They have to come back to wherever they gotta go to civilization to do it. It's ridiculous. But not only can't they do that, they can't communicate, which, which is, in this day and age, it's ridiculous that they can't be out in Greenwood or out in Cedarville or out in Alaway or, or, I'll say, I'm drawing a blank, but outside, out, right outside of Miami, driving towards, towards Palatine Lake. You can't, you have no Pittsburgh, you have no communication whatsoever. And I can tell you when it shuts off. So I, I, I wanted to put, I decided that maybe what I say doesn't mean anything, but maybe by vote today, we bring what an expert says, and I, and I'll do quote, I'll say this, that's not right, but in that meeting, in our discussion with them, you know, we asked a lot of questions. Actually, one of the commissioners of Salem was, hey, just cut the pony, pony, the pony show out, just cut it out. Just tell us, and they sat down and had a discussion of what this project about. The one thing I like, out of the blue, they go, oh, this project's well-funded? And the next question we asked was, next question was, can you do it within this time period? Yeah, we should be able to do it. There might be little things we don't. We should be able to make that. To me, that was like, you could see the room, like, wow. Maybe, maybe we're not so far off afterward. Maybe all the things that were, were not funded, it's gonna be this, it's gonna do this. All, all the stuff people say, we believe until maybe people that are in the industry said that to us. And they, and you say, oh, it's self-serving, Doug, didn't it? Now, they, they did it. We weren't even asking about it. We're just talking about things. And that, that kind of, the bell went off. That maybe, just maybe this will work. And I'm gonna say this, so it's on the record. Not only, and I'll, and I'll tell you, how, how's Doug know this? How's we know this compared to other things? Well, I, I did two, two things I've done in my life. One, liaison, and I've said this to our business administrator, sorry. As a liaison, I was a liaison to the City of violence, a simple utility. And at the time I was, just became utility, they had just, they, they were actually taking, decided that they wanted to just small-fall and shovel it and be done with it. And I, and I met, the mayor of the City of violence is here right now. He can tell you how poor the violence was simply utility is to the City of violence. And without it, violence, you couldn't do many of the things they, they do. And actually, I mean, I, the mayor's the best equipped, but that, at that time, it was useless. It was, the people, the morale was terrible. It was, it was deteriorating. It was coal and oil. We were, the EP and the EPA were on us, finding us, doing everything they could do within, in a short period of time, within a year, two years, and there are other things. We had turned that thing around. Morale was through the roof. We became a solar, the solar fields, the most thirty percent power under solar power, gas turbines, I won't go off. I know there's other things, but gas turbines, we got out of coal and all those regulations we abide by. But all of a sudden, the money that generated, the possibilities were there. And then the mayor's that other changed, which has been good. But that's what I equate this project with. I was with one other project, and I apologize, but can we, I worked at the Landis Theater fourteen, fifteen years on that building. People, many times, just bulldoze it, get it, just rip it down. And every, every study done about the City of violence downtown always said the cornerstone was the Landis Theater. They said it, but they didn't believe it. They wanted to make it a writing. Till people came out at a meeting like this in a room, under, with the camera, must have been about two thousand people showed up that said, we don't need another drugstore. The theater was worth saving. What, they did everything, government did everything possible to tear that building down, everything possible. Every violation can be filed, every, because I wanted a court to fight it. And, and eventually, the mayor, one of the mayors pulled it together, got, got it going. And there are people that got involved. But right now, it's in private, a private person's hands. It's active. It's used. I mean, they have their troubles, just like anybody else. But the building is now a center, a cornerstone like it was projected to be. People know that building. You tell them where the latest is, they know where it's at. They go. And I, and I, so I saw already twisted, so the reason why I'm saying is that I see the same thing in this middle mile. And the middle mile, by doing the middle mile, gets us to the end mile, the B program, which the state is looking at us right now to also give us money to do the end mile, which is one of the biggest things that people wanted to see. Oh, you'll never get to the end mile. We're gonna get to the end mile. It's not that, it's not that just the residents are gonna get the end mile. It's all the businesses that can tie into it. This, this will be, and whatever format we make it, could be that generating of income that the violence was simply utilities been to the city, to, could be to the county. And, and then we can use that money to lower taxes, to, to fund programs that we need to fund, to do parks and recreation that we need, to, to fix that road that we have to fix. All the things that this county needs would bring us resources. Not only that, but tax ratables, which, which allows us to do what we do here. So I, I know, I know my colleagues have issues with it. Alls I'm saying is just give us an opportunity to get in front of you and let, you can talk to the experts, decide, ask them the questions themselves. Let them, that's what we brought them in to be our consultants, our advisors, to let them give you the answer. And let me just say this, if they give you an answer that this is no frigging way it will work, I'm with it, move now. Okay? So, but at least you could ask them the questions that you, that whatever I say doesn't mean anything. So, but you may be pleasantly surprised. So.
If that's the case, then, if that's the case, then, let's do this. Let's table it to the point where we get in front of these people and then we bring it to the next board.
We can't keep table.
Well, I, I, I want to say something to this. It's, two weeks ago, you pulled it off the agenda and on the last Monday, you put it back in. Is that fair to them?
I took it off.
And that's not fair. That's, to me, that was a very dirty tactic. You know, that's taxpayers who paid the bills.
It was all for two weeks.
Exactly. And it was supposed to go on the next agenda. Also, we also spent a lot of money on, to do a study. Why, why not wait till the study come in?
What study we done? What study you wait for?
You know.
What study we wait for?
The one that you keep on turning it off. So you know, the one that you never want to give us.
What study?
The one I've been asking for, personally to you, you know?
Could I simply read the resolution?
Yeah, because at this point, it was taken.
You guys, listen, you guys had the chance to talk. I'm not done. He's not done.
Excuse me. Go ahead.
Okay.
Go ahead.
So, you know, I, I, it's not that I, we totally against the middle mile, is that we put it off the agenda and now we're putting it back on the last Monday. You know what? I, I, I say, let's table it, just like Silvio says, because it's not fair to the community that you pull something off. This is something that is important.
It is.
It is very important for you, for those who voted yes, and for those who voted no. This is very important for you to pull it off and say, and think that it's, it's on the next month agenda or something like that. And they follow, and wait for the last Monday. Exactly. You're saying.
I could have had this argument last week. When we let everything go through, we talked it over.
So you waited to the last moment to that?
We waited to the last moment.
Is that fair to the taxpayers?
I know we didn't. We didn't have any decision in that.
It was pulled off.
It was pulled off.
Was that fair to the taxpayers?
Was that, exactly. That's.
Without discussion.
And then, and again, I did that, so.
This is the prerogative right now. The director did have a prerogative to remove, and the director does have the prerogative to put it back.
The director does have the power.
This is a voting body. This is what we do. This is a healthy discussion. This is what we're here to do. There are many sides to all issues that we talk about on this board. And now, the director wants it back on the agenda, and I think we should proceed the way it is we should.
Let's just, let's vote, let's give it to the next board too, and let them have experts with their opinion and let them look at the project, and then they can ask all the questions they want, be informed. And part of this is that we have, we have timing issues by the NTIA. We have Salem County who's voted already for it.
And we do have a representative.
Mr. Carr.
Sure. My sense is that you would read the resolution and then there'd be a motion and then there'd be discussion.
I just wanted to make a statement. So that's absolutely true.
Yeah, Russ, why is that we proceed?
We're doing it back.
Yeah, it's my, I just said the statement.
Resolution 2023 dash eight seventeen, resolution awarding a contract for middle mile grant program, expert consulting and advisory services for the counties of Cumberland and Salem, RFP number twenty-three dash forty, tectonic engineering consultants, geologists and land surveyors, DPC, four hundred twenty thousand, four hundred fifty-three dollars. Do I have a motion in second?
Second.
Commissioner Pearson.
Yes.
Commissioner Russo.
Yes.
Can I talk for a second?
Sure.
Please. You know, I didn't know that these were going on the agenda until an hour ago. It's true. And whether you're for the broadband project or you're against the broadband project, you're about to vote to obligate this county to pay their portion of over a half a million dollars.
Yes.
In a way that the public did not know that you were gonna do and had no opportunity tonight.
That's not true. That is not true. They, it was on the agenda for two weeks ago, for the whole two weeks, and it was taken off and then flipped back on. So that's not true.
So the public did not know that you were gonna vote on this tonight. They did not know and did not have an opportunity to come to that podium and talk in any way. The only thing that I will say is that adopting this resolution tonight has the feel of adopting a resolution to engage in an electrical project in regard to the construction of a jail. That's how I feel.
I don't, I don't understand it.
That the public did not have an opportunity to respond or to talk about this resolution. And this board appears to be about to obligate the residents of Cumberland County to half a million, up to their portion of a half a million dollars in a resolution that nobody knew was going to be adopted tonight in any way whatsoever. Yes, it was advertised two weeks ago. I think that what you're doing might be voided. I think it's inappropriate. I think that the public has a right to speak in regard to this. Nobody knew to come tonight to oppose this because nobody knew, or to speak in favor of it because nobody knew it was going to be heard. And it just doesn't feel right. But if you.
Well, thanks, thanks again, Mr. Johnson. Thanks again. This is the fourth time, fourth time you've come up with that, fourth time. And I really appreciate that. The bottom line is that I have the right to do it and they, I'm asking, and really doing it for the board members here, the ones who'll be on the next board, to have some information to, to look at this problem. Yes, I'm obligating them to spend the money. We've already obligated them back in July or August when we decided to join, to receive the grant. We just got our, our letter that we could actually borrow off the grant. That's how far along we are in this process. So I, I just feel that we should continue. And that, and you were part of all this discussion about bringing in the advisory consultant, bringing in the grants coordinator, bringing the design, all these went out the bid. Everyone, there's no surprise. Everyone went out the bid. And now, because we're following through what we said we're gonna follow through, which we have, are doing that tonight, putting this, which was on, we've only delayed it two weeks, two weeks, now you have an issue with it.
But with all due respect, we, the public did have an opportunity this summer and we went through all that. And we came to the conclusion that we were doing this. And this was the first step. And we were getting ready to vote and then boom, it got pulled off. And I think, you know, better heads prevailed and like somebody, you know, that told me that you can't let politics get in the way of good governance. And I think that's what happened a little bit, a couple of weeks ago.
But the way that it was pulled, the public never.
And this isn't granted. So I, I live in Cumberland County and I don't feel like, I feel like this money's coming out of, from the federal government. I think it's, you have to go.
This is not a grant.
You spent one penny of that.
Do you know, recently?
You spent one penny of that grant.
You spent one penny of that grant, and you're obligated that 24 million.
That's great, that's not in the budget. That's, that's not true, that is not true also.
This is not grant money, this comes out of the county taxpayers' pocket. Hey, I'm not saying this is right or wrong, I'm saying doing it this way is wrong, that's what I'm saying. I'm, I'm not saying whether I'm in favor of this project, against this project, I'm saying to do it this way, when the public had no notice that this was gonna be heard tonight. Yes, it was, there was notice two weeks ago, but there was never any opportunity because the resolutions were pulled, for the public to talk in favor or against it.
And that is a very good point, because two weeks ago, there were people in the audience to speak on behalf of this.
And there were people here that made it in favor or against.
Are we gonna have, can we make sure, see if anybody is in the audience about this? Maybe there's still people here tonight who like to speak.
I'd like to speak, Doug, I'd like to talk.
Well, hold on, hold on, so, if you're telling me there's nobody, and you've got two hands raised.
And maybe there are people tonight that would like to speak, but there sure might have been more people here if they'd known that this was gonna be heard tonight sooner than an hour before the meeting. But, again, I will respect this board, I respect what the board does.
Doesn't sound like you respect this board, so. The bottom line is that, and I don't, and I don't appreciate a comment like that, but you know, I respect this board.
Just a technical, just a technical, I need a technical question, I, I, all of my rules of order here, I'm not sure, but there's been a motion and a second, and the vote started, how will we either proceed or clarify the next?
So, at this point, theoretically, right, we could continue, or theoretically, the motion could be retracted, right, for purposes of opening a public session on this topic, if that you wish.
No. Well, wait a minute, so, are they, are people in the audience allowed to speak, and we withdraw?
Only if you go back and open a public session. Right now, you're in the middle of the vote.
Would we, can we do that, just to, to have the public speak that is here? Just retract it a little bit?
You retract your vote if we're gonna vote.
Just for now, until, and we'll call for a vote.
I'm okay with that, I'm okay with the people's speak.
Then my other suggestion is that, if we're gonna do this, and I hate to do this, but to the extent that the public doesn't have an opportunity, I believe the motion should be, or the resolution should be, unless there's enough copies for everybody that could have an, and I'm sorry to do that to you, but it's the right way to do it. Right? In other words, if the public get to hear what this, what the proposal, not the, not the attachments.
If those were included in the circular agendas, then you have to read them entire.
So, first, we need to retract, first, we need to retract.
Right, whoever read the motion, you need to retract.
Resend the resolution. So, I'm gonna say we're gonna rescind the motion until, until we hear from the public, and then we can get back it tonight.
For purposes of opening a public.
That's right, just to open up the public, and then we vote on it.
Will I have to read both again?
One first.
I think maybe we do one or two, I would suggest.
And I'll second.
Do they do, um, roll call?
All in favor? You mean, all in favor or roll call?
I think all in favor, only retract, that's what we're, right?
All in favor.
Okay. And then you would theoretically read what you.
It's just reading both of them, all right, and do I have a motion to retract?
Yeah, Jeff raises a fair point. It might make it faster to read both of them.
Okay, she made the, she, she made the motion to retract, so.
Just for the public portion.
Just for the public portion this evening, and then, we will open the floor up this evening for discussion, and then we will go back to it this evening.
That's discretion of this body.
I was gonna list it out real quick, so, we had a motion, she retracted it, that's done. So, Kim's gonna read both resolutions in their entirety for the benefit of the public, and then the board can then motions, open public session for discussion on those two resolutions, close, and then you can go back to.
But it would be a discretion of the board.
So, we were just in the middle of the voice vote.
Yes.
So.
Resolution 2023-817, resolution awarding a contract for Middle Mile grant program, expert consulting, and advisory services for the counties of Cumberland and Salem, RFP number 23-40. Whereas the county of Cumberland is in need of Middle Mile grant program, expert consulting, advise, and advisory services for the counties of Cumberland and Salem, RFP number 23-40, and whereas funds are available for this purpose. Whereas NJSA 40A:11-4.1 provides that a local contracting unit may use competitive contracting in lieu of public bidding for procurement of specialized goods and services, the price of which exceeds the bid threshold for certain purposes, including the aforementioned, and whereas pursuant to NJSA 40A:11-4.3, parentheses, this board duly passed a resolution authorizing the use of competitive contracting for the provision of said services, and whereas the county director of purchasing recommends the award of competitive contracting to tectonic engineering consultants, geologists, and land surveyors, DPC, 197 Route 18 South, Suite 260 South Tower, East Brunswick, New Jersey, 08816. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the board of county commissioners of the county of Cumberland as follows, one, the contract pursuant to competitive contracting in lieu of competitive bidding is hereby awarded to tectonic engineering consultants, geologists, and land surveyors, DPC, 197 Route 18 South, Suite 260 South Tower, East Brunswick, New Jersey, 08816, and the amount not to exceed $420,453 in accordance with the request for proposal specification documents and proposal of the contractor. This contract shall commence upon award by the board of county commissioners, and shall be for the period commencing December 1st, 2023, and continuing until June 30th, 2025. The county shall have the sole option to renew or extend the contract for two additional one-year periods, subject to the availability of grant funds, as may similarly be extended. Two, that the director and clerk of this board be and the same are hereby authorized and directed to execute the contract hereby awarded. Three, that said contract shall be charged to line item appropriation or account number as follows, G02G3705355-005, $294,317.10.
You're halfway there, Chris.
Resolution 2023-820, resolution awarding a contract for Middle Mile grant program administrative services for the counties of Cumberland and Salem, RFP number 23-46. Whereas the county of Cumberland is in need of Middle Mile grant program administrative services for the counties of Cumberland and Salem, RFP number 23-46. Whereas funds are available for this purpose. Whereas NJSA 40A:11-4.1 provides that a local contracting unit may use competitive contracting in lieu of public bidding for procurement of specialized goods and services, the price of which exceeds the bid threshold for certain purposes, including the aforementioned, and whereas pursuant to NJSA 40A:11-4.3A, this board duly passed a resolution authorizing the use of competitive contracting for the provision of said services, and whereas the county, the county director of purchasing recommends the award of competitive contract triad associates, 1301 West Forest Grove Road, Suite 3A, Bonneville, New Jersey, 08360. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the board of county commissioners of the county of Cumberland as follows, one, that a contract pursuant to competitive contracting in lieu of competitive bidding is hereby awarded to triad associates, 1301 West Forest Grove Road, Suite 3A, Bonneville, New Jersey, 08360, and the amount not to exceed $125,000. In accordance with the request for proposal, proposal slash specification documents and the proposal of the contractor, this contract shall commence upon award by the board of county commissioners, and shall be for the period commencing December 1st, 2023, and continuing until June 30th, 2025. The county shall have the sole option to renew or extend this contract for two additional one-year periods, subject to the availability of grant funds, as may similarly be extended. Two, that the director and clerk of this board be and the same are hereby authorized and directed to execute the contract hereby awarded. Three, that said contract be charged to line item appropriation.
Could you mute, please? Hello?
Or account number as follows, G02G3705355-001, $87,500.
This is Scott's body, we don't know for any further. Since Ms. Pearson brought Robert's words, I just want clarification, that we had enough adequate notice as a right man to read that resolution?
Yep. The resolutions that were just read?
Right, to vote on.
That's the best I can do with your adequate notice. There is such a thing as a pocket resolution.
Okay.
I believe the BA commented on that.
Right.
Satisfactorily.
So, that's.
So, it stands the wish of the board.
Okay. Just to make sure it's legal. All right, we'll move on. I'd like to make a motion, table.
Which one?
Both.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Pearson?
No.
Commissioner Musso?
No.
Commissioner Capizola?
No.
Commissioner Saleo? Commissioner Lutz?
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero?
Yes.
Director Almira?
No.
Now, can I have a motion to open it to the public?
Second.
All favor, or you wanna roll call?
Aye.
I'm sorry, can I get who, who, you, who made the motion?
I think.
And John, John said.
Okay.
How would you roll?
Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Musso?
Yes.
Commissioner Capizola?
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo?
It's your vote, governor, absolutely.
Commissioner Lutz?
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero? Director Almira?
Yes. So, if anyone'd like to make a comment on the two resolutions that were read by this Congress body, be it five minutes, state your name, state your name and where you're
Good evening, board and public. My name's Jonathan Hayes, I'm from Millville. Commissioners, I sat through the three and a half hour presentation over at the college when we talked about this project, and, and my position on this was, I agreed with, I agreed with Mr. Van Drew. There's a real need for this project in our area. Technology is in a tough place, we've got some monopolies, uneasiness, right, in my heart, and we're not set and stable in our geological area with good technology, right, so it's a challenge. So, we got a nice opportunity to bring money into the area, to develop this and to advance our area. The only thing, I'm gonna tell you guys, as a, as a project manager, right, the red pen, if you guys watched that, when I did that presentation, right, it was about the red pen. So, I'm just gonna remind you guys a couple things that I was concerned about at the time that this was gonna be processed. The demonstrators did not give us, or the presenters didn't give us anything in regards to a risk register. And a risk register is important, right? When you go into a project, you need to know what kind of risk you're gonna have, financial, expansion, equipment, whatever, environmental, whatever those things are, you need to do a pre-study to that, and make sure you're in a good place. The other one was stakeholders, and who's got a leg in it? What businesses, what people, what townships, what OEM, for example, city municipalities, the county, you need to know who your stakeholders are, and what their, what their leveraging values are in your project, very important. And, and most important is preliminary engineering, and if you didn't do a preliminary engineering study, you really don't know what you're getting into. And as you take it to approval, and through the approval processes, if you don't have good information, you're gonna make bad decisions, right? So, I'm not making any accusations of that, but if you don't have the detail in front of you to make good, sound decisions in project management, you're gonna take a risk. The other thing is, fast-tracking, when you take a project and you fast-track it, and put it into a process, kinda like moving it too quick, you, you really can set yourself up for making bad decisions. We've had a little bit of room discussion tonight about whether this was on the table, off the table. I'm just speaking as a professional. I really think you guys should table this, because if you're not ready to make educated decisions, don't put time pressure on this. If we wanna get to Doug's goal in the end, and what Van Drew brought for us, to, to develop and bring the bench strength back up on the county, let's do it, but let's do it at the right pace to make educated decisions, right? Not under time pressure.
Unfortunately, sir, if we don't do this tonight, we'll never see it.
So, I'm not gonna make that position.
I'm just telling you, from our, from my point, if we don't do this tonight, we'll never see it, so.
So, you're gonna, you're gonna enable.
I'm not gonna enable, what I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna start the process, and once we start the process, we, we've already gone down that route. Then, can I ask you a quick question? Who is responsible for doing a risk, the first thing you said, a risk?
The owner of the project, who's ever been, whoever's the sponsor to bring that to the board, whoever brought that to you guys that night.
This is what they're supposed to be doing.
These are.
Right, this is what they're, this is what they're.
What person did that?
These are key elements, right? When you talk about stakeholder, stakeholder risk and a risk register, these are important attributes. Anybody that's got project management experience, Matt, I'm looking at you over my shoulder, right? These are key, these are key fundamental top attributes of a presenter for a project, you really have to do a good study on this, it's important. So, I understand, Commissioner, I don't, don't wanna point you out on that, but don't let time pressure be a voting decision for something that is so important for our area, right? So, if there's no other comments, that's it, I just wanted to share my passion.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Hayes.
Thanks, I appreciate it.
Good evening, moderator Jeperson, Upper Deerfield Township. I've been coming to the meetings, either in person, or listening in, by remote, most of the time, if it works. And I was very heartbroken the other week when this was tabled. I felt Mrs. Pearson's pain. I'm just kinda agitated, because even though I live in Upper Deerfield, I have very bad cell phone, very bad. You would think I'd have great cell phone reception, just, my Comcast is sketchy, and I don't know, that's all I have, it's my only choice, I have no other choices. And as far as people, the public attending the meetings for Mr. Johnson's comment, it's open. Every meeting is open to the public, if they don't show up, then there's no one to discuss with. So, I just, I would really love to see the county move forward with this. I think it would be great for all the schools, you know, my area, all the way down the other end of the county, where they don't have anything, and how do we expect to compete in any way, shape, or form, if we don't have anything going on? I just, I don't understand what the, why you would disagree with it. You know, you're, you're, you've been moving on it for this long, why stop now? Don't, keep going, please, pretty please.
Thank you, Senator Jeperson.
Sandy Acevito, Upper Deerfield Township. You voted on this in August, and it was passed, and I'm, I'm thinking that these are just details of part of that motion that you already approved in August, so I'm really not sure what the, what the holdup is here, and one can only hope that the decision to terminate this project is not to benefit any political figures that may or may not have a financial interest in any of the current broadband providers. And I'd like to know where your outrage was, Mr. Romero, last meeting, when it was tabled. I mean, you're outraged for the public, because it's put back on, where was your outrage last time?
Because it was put in, the only problem I have, is put in at the last Monday.
Because it was put in, the only problem I have is put in at the last meeting. You know, just like she said, everybody comes to the meetings, but there's people that would come especially just for this. My outrage, Mr. Capizola, then you may know this $4545,000 was coming out of taxpayers' money, it's not a grant. And is it the guy that is voting? Yes. There's a lot of questions.
Okay, whether...
The red pen is out there. There's a lot of questions that are not being answered.
Whether you agree or disagree with this project, I can certainly agree with one thing, this board is really losing credibility by flip-flopping and uncertainty. I mean, we have no idea where you guys are headed from one meeting to the next. So credibility is really important, especially at that table, and you're losing it. Thank you.
Commissioner... Salem, Commissioner...
Good evening, Commissioners and Public, my name is Courtney Taylor, I am a Commissioner from Salem County, I live in Oldman Township, I think the town we are very good, and I have Internet access. In two minutes, if I, I'll try to keep this short, I apologize for...
Bring us a mic.
Thank you. Two minutes, I'll try to do this quickly. I want to tell you that Salem County has passed this, we have to enjoin with Cumberland County and we have already voted unanimously to pass these, or accept these contracts for this project. We felt that, when I speak directly to Tectonics, or excuse me, Tectonic, we felt that, you know, Tectonic is this consulting engineer you're looking for to make sure our project is well-defined as we move forward. They have 36 years' experience in this, now 36 years if you were in an airplane, that would be very new, but in technology, that's a long, long time. So we felt that these are the right people to help us get to that next step. And we also felt that this, one of the concerns we hear across the board, for my constituents or the public here in Cumberland, is we want to make sure that this project has no cost overruns. This is an insurance policy to make sure we have the right people telling us how to do this. I'll step back for one second. The N T I A, sorry, Public, National Telecommunications and Information Agency, who put this grant together, or who was orchestrating this grant, is designed for areas that would not get the broadband infrastructure because of fewer people. It's designed to make this available, this infrastructure available for the public. One of the things that it does is redundancy. We don't have redundancy, Internet goes out, sort of thing. If you're a business, you're not going to be here if you don't have that redundancy off of the connection pieces for the middle mile. So anyway, the two points, one is we felt that this was the right first step, we felt that this would, this will help us make good decisions, they will help us make good decisions throughout the whole process. The second piece we recognize, and then I'll quit, is we recognize a sense of urgency. We're $24 million, the grant's $24 million, so it's 75% basically of what we're getting with $30 million here. We understand, this is all from 2021, the Jobs Act, N T I A has $1 billion to give out, so that's, we're this small out of this big. If we're just sitting around thinking, let's wait and see what happens, our fiber costs go up, the consultants we can get go up, we need to be addressing this as soon as we possibly can, and for those people who say B grant, right, this is only the middle mile, the state of New Jersey, each grant, each B grant, B, I'm sorry, B is broadband equity access and deployment, I'm sorry. The B grants open this, next year, 2024. If we're just saying, oh, we don't know what we're doing, we've been given $24 million, nothing's going on, we lose the credibility that we can go to the state and say, you should give us this money because we will have the infrastructure in place, the middle mile, so that you can reach the people. And because you need the middle mile to make this happen. So we both recognize that this is a smart move to help us move forward and we believe that it's important that we do this with some sense of urgency. Thank you, that's my five minutes.
Thank you. You have four five minutes. Is there anyone else on the phones that would like to make a comment?
Of course, there is.
We're waiting for you there.
Good evening, this is Nancy Ridgeway from Upper Deerfield, Fairfield Township, and anywhere else you want to say. I am upset with what was gotten ordered a while ago. I mean, on the 28th, our meeting in November, the director said that he was going to call these two resolutions and wait until January when the new members got appointed onto the board. And then this afternoon, late this afternoon, right before the meeting, I find out that you put the resolution in. And then I'm listening here tonight of the bickering back and forth. Do you know what you're doing?
It's the box.
It doesn't make any sense, Mr. Director. It sounds like that you were trying to trick people. And that's what it sounds like, you said in November, it would be back on in January.
Yes.
And now you're sneaking it back on in December because it's not personally, in-person at the meeting, that's what it sounds like. Good night.
Anyone else? Yeah, say your name, say your name and where you're from. You have five minutes.
Yeah, my name is John Reynolds, I'm from Vineland. I watch it on TV here and I'm wondering, who's speaking up for the children? If the phones and the Internet are that lacking in this county and the schools, how are the kids ever going to compete with the rest of the kids in the rest of the state of New Jersey and in the country besides the world? So I'm asking is to stand up for the kids and give them a fair shake at least and don't people penalize without the access to the Internet and access to self-communication that they need to be out there in this world competing. That's all I have to say, let's do the right things for the kids.
Thank you, Mr. Pace. Anyone else on the phone would like to speak? Anyone? Are you anyone?
Make a motion to close the public portion?
I would like to add one thing, pardon?
Okay. I didn't see.
Commissioner Jeperson, Upper Deerfield Township, Salem County, thank you for voting yes. My son just bought a house outside of Shark Town. He's got nothing. He has nothing. He's in Shark Town. No internet, all he has is his little cell phone that might work. So thank you very much for voting on that and I would be nice to him.
Okay.
I made a motion to close the public?
Second. You want to? All favor? You want to look?
Close the public? Close, yeah, because you did it to open. Okay. Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Musso?
Yes.
Commissioner Capizola?
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo?
Yes.
Commissioner Ludes?
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero?
Yes.
Director Albrecht?
Yes.
Now make a motion to read the resolution?
I'll second it.
To vote 23817.
I'll second it.
Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Musso?
Yes.
Commissioner Capizola?
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo?
Yes.
Commissioner Ludes?
I do have a comment with my vote, may I make that? Thank you. One of the members of the public did mention who was speaking up for the children. I'm educator, Commissioner Capizola's an educator, my original vote to move forward and accept this grant was in favor of it. And my vote tonight is no, not to accept this resolution simply because I did have issues with how the RFPs were written. And I am still looking out for those children, Mr. Reynolds was on the phone, because I don't want them to go into a million-dollar debt cycle for the next, you know, I don't know how many years. Because once again, I do want my children to come back here and be able to afford something, so this vote is concerns with how the RFP was written and I want to make sure that if we go forward with this project, it is done responsibly to reflect Mr. Pace's comments as well. And it is a great opportunity, but it must be done well. And right now, I do not feel comfortable with that situation tonight. My vote is no, and I also don't feel comfortable that we had less than an hour to look at this and be prepared to vote on it tonight. I know that at the last meeting, there were members of the public here and I do find it quite unfair that they were not able to have this publicized, have the transparency that this board deserves to give the public, for them to be here to have their voices heard. So, thank you.
Deputy Director Romero?
I definitely agree with Commissioner Ludes on this. The kids are very important to us, is that, you know, we, $545,000, Mr. Capizola, we didn't even know where it was coming from. I hate to say this.
Hold on one second.
I got the floor.
No, no, you were going to make a comment, just address the chair, that's all, right? That's all. Dress it to the chair, right?
I'm sorry, sir. And apologize to Mr. Johnson in behalf of the Commissioners. You shouldn't have him being treated this way. You know, I agree with everybody in here that this, it was put in in the last minute. That is the only thing I'm fighting here right now, is that the way it was given to you, given to the public. And you know what, my answer is no.
That's all right. It's a shame because it was put on the agenda and for a period had it done, it could have been reviewed by anything. The thing has not changed since it was put on, I took it right from, returned it from what we did, I guess it was November, I thought it was two weeks ago, but the bottom line is that I told you why I changed my opinion of it. We are, and actually, Mr. Pace is actually, I'm glad for, he's one of those people why we're doing this, and this consulting engineers, to make sure we have experts over our shoulder while we're looking at the design, which is the most important part of this whole project, is the design. And we get the design right, the whole project goes through, so you're absolutely right on. And that's why we're getting the environment consultant first, and environmental, we push, the N T I A requires an environmental compliance for the voting. I, it's just a shame, that's all. And don't ever apologize for a comment I made, please, Mr. Romero. And I vote yes for this. I hoped down the road that you guys would look at this, that people would review this and vote yes also. It's a shame, and there's a lot more people out there, a lot more people out there that agree that something has to be done. So please, talk to a lot more people, please. All right? And that's, this was the first one, then we have to read the second one.
So I'll make a motion?
I have to read it first.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I thought you read it already. Yeah, I did. I did a good job, my wife did much.
She's going to do my...
No, I'm good, right, because you read it, not just my title only.
820, 2023-820.
Resolution 2023-820, I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Commissioner Pearson?
Yes. I hear what everybody is saying in reference to this grant. From all we've worked on for the past year or so, we understand that this is a grant, unless that changes. The state, everybody is ready to participate in this. This is the first step, in my humble opinion, these are the people who are going to give us that risk assessment, who's going to give us all the answers that we need to have and go into that detail. There's no new debt in a sense because this is a federal grant and all funding is coming from that grant. I'm sorry, this is what, this is my understanding of what this is about. This is just the first step, this is just the first step. I'm sorry, there, everybody has their opinion, all right? Everybody has, I'm not going to do it, everybody has their opinion. This is a project that is absolutely necessary in this county. I'm tired of driving from Salem to Bridgeton, having a meeting and getting my calls dropped. I'm tired of going into a classroom and the kids cannot access my online class because they live in Fairton, they live someplace in this county, they're calling me on the phone, I can't get my lessons, what do I do? I'm tired of that. And I'm tired of entering this nonsense, this just, to me, it's just so petty. We have an opportunity to improve broadband, we should do it, we should do it. And just let's get it done, good, bad, or different, these two, these two resolutions start the process. We will get the answers. I vote yes and just hope that the people in this county will finally, finally, finally come into the 21st century. It's, that's our job as public servants, this is what we're supposed to do. And I'm sorry, I'm just going to say this, our job as elected officials is to give something to those people out there in these communities who can't come to this table, who can't pay that $1,000 donation, who can't buy all the tickets and who don't know my first name. My job is to give those people a little bit of the crumbs from this table. That's what we're supposed to do as public servants. I don't care who doesn't like it. I'm concerned because that student could not get her lessons. I'm concerned because our calls get dropped. That's our job. Give a little bit to the people who live here and pay their taxes and do everything right and don't know who to call to tell them what to do. Give them a little something, that's our job. And that's why I vote yes, I will vote yes 50 times, I will be like the city of Chicago and come back and vote 24 times. This is what we need here in this county, let's do something for the people for a change. Thank you, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Capizola?
The biggest argument I heard about voting against this was that this wasn't going to get to the end mile. And I think our Commissioner from Salem tonight explained how the B grant's going to work. So that should answer, I know, Mr. Romero, that was a big thing with you, you wanted to get to the end mile, I agree with you, we do need to get to the end mile. And we can't go and get this B grant unless we do this middle mile. So my vote is definitely yes.
Commissioner Saleo?
Yes.
Commissioner Ludes?
Once again, I do have less than an issue with this RFP. I did feel good about how this was written and what came back to us. But once again, I do have concerns that we didn't have the public here and it was originally advertised last month that it was going to be on the January agenda, and so my vote is no to have it revisited in January.
Deputy Director Romero?
I feel the same way as Commissioner Ludes, my answer is no.
Director Albrecht?
Yes.
Okay. I've got, I wasn't here at your last Commissioner's meeting, I'm sorry, I'm not sorry. I was probably wrong and now I'm here and I'm coughing up a lot, so I'm sure it's not contagious. So just forwarding anybody that's possibly in business, this is my mic right now. All right, so the first one, we're going to do the month of October, I'm just going to read them in their entirety because if I tried to do them combined, I think it would just get confusing. So we began in the month of October, the cash balance of $25,410,281.97. We had cash receipts in the month of October of $11,681,476.78 and disbursements of $15,681,939.82. Ending the month of October with a balance of $21,498,818.93. There's an itemized list of investments. On the way at the bottom, total $61,961,61.61. And the clerk has CDs in October of $200,000. All right, November, big changes here. Really? We got in the month of November, same balance, $21,498,818.93. We had cash receipts of $31,862,527.69. Taxes were due, that's why it's so high. Cash disbursements of $18,825,894. Ending the month of November with $34,447,337.68. And then itemized list of investments, the total amount is $53 million and then, oh, I'm sorry, $61,961,61.65. And then the CDs for the clerk's office have been redeemed and they did not roll them over, so that's why they're not there. So the motion is second, you accept both treasuries reports as read. I do want to mention that we're getting towards year-end, which is the best time mention that we're getting towards year end, which is the best time of year for me. I love it. So much fun. We get to roll the books forward. We have a temporary budget resolution over your reorganization meeting. What that means is because the state doesn't allow us to adopt a budget in advance of a calendar year, that we have to adopt a temporary version of it. It's basically just a quarter of the current year, our 2023 for '24, so we can get through three, four months of expenses. Because otherwise, if we don't have a budget, we can't pay anybody, and the governor shuts down. So that's why it's all for reorganizing, had your work session or voting session in January. So going through year end, we're trying to roll it, get everybody's salaries up, so we have your step guides up for next year, get all the health benefit renewal rates in for everybody's paychecks. We're trying to write the financial statements as of year end, so I have a lot of closing entries, which is fun accounting stuff. And then January 2nd, everybody comes to the county, and suddenly Edmunds in the financial system is able to use. Oh, wow. Christmas miracle. I'm gonna stop talking. I'm just gonna, yeah, motion is second to accept the charge.
Do I have a...
I'm sorry, I haven't said flag.
You needed to stretch after that.
You wouldn't tell.
I didn't call for it.
Favor.
All right.
All right, thank you.
Do I have a motion second to authorize payment of all salaries and wages?
Some votes.
Suck it.
All favor.
All right.
Do I have a motion second to open public comment?
Some votes.
Second.
All favor.
All right.
Anyone who'd like to speak on any subject, uh, actually, yes, maybe if you, if you second.
My name is Russell Crees, current from Byden, current servant of the Board of Elections for this county. Just wanted to update people on the situation as we know, with major changes in the election process. All driven by legislation signed into law, which created early in-person voting. We wish people would use it. As far as what's going on now, when we brought the equipment in, our building on Charlotte Pike was overcrowded. Doug Albrecht is our liaison. He looked at the situation, immediately knew we had a problem, and proceeded to come up with a plan. We wanted to find a building that the county owned, and to use our own people here to refit it and make it suitable. And this, this was done very effectively. Public Works took care of that situation under Mr. Riley, and the building was secure for our needs. Technically, digital technology, Stan Fields and his people came in and secured it that way. And as a result, our elections are running nicely. Digital function works well. We have more room to train people in our main building. And as you know, we've had very few problems on the last two elections, starting up. The workers are more familiar with you, but all this because we have room to train people. So my hands, my hand, again, my hands out to the Board of Commissions for doing all this and getting this thing done. And we'll see where legislature takes us in the future with more...
Mandates.
Mandates. As they really are. So again, thanks to the workers and everyone who did this, and to this commission, good work.
I'd reach out with a question for you.
Yes.
I was recently reading something where they're not trying to create a same, same-day registration. Are you familiar with that?
I would refer you to talk to your legislature about that. That's, all we do is what they sign into it.
Got you.
I just want to make a comment that you're absolutely correct. The, the elections have become smoother because again, they're getting used to equipment, and our people are better trained, and on top of that, I commend the Board of Elections for being on top of that. Even the recordings got better. I think that's been with, good communication with the clerk's office has helped achieve that. So I, you guys work very hard, and their staff works very hard to pull this off. I know there's still other issues that have to be addressed space-wise. This, this commission, or the next commission will probably try to address them. I, I think you guys are, need more room, still need more room. So it's still become, still be taking up their lives with that stuff, so.
Thank you very much for that. And to Celeste Riley, her, her staff, fabulous work. And things have really gone well. And we're looking for 2024 to be ready for us. With that, I'll yield my time back.
Okay. Anybody have any questions?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you for your reporting.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Asavina. Ms. Asavina, why you welcome. Is there anyone on the, on the phone that would like to make a comment?
Of course, there is.
Yeah, Ms. Ridgway. Ms. Ridgway, you wanna, you have a comment you want to make?
So, does Daisy want a dinner or sperm?
She shook her head.
Yeah, mine's real quick, man. Let me, let me...
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Asavina.
Um, on Resolution 2023-854 and 863, um, what's the basis for the 75% increase in the one and the, and the other, if it wasn't a price increase of that for the last one?
That's a lot of court, we have a testing. So the, I don't know how I phrase it, but with our current court situation, with our lawsuits, we're required for mandatory testing. So while a lot of other jails in the state are now being, because of COVID, are must-continue COVID testing. So when the articles were put out, there was an estimate, and because of your frequency of number of tests, that's why we have such a ridiculous amount increased. So hopefully, as the suits progress, that we don't have that anymore. That's just my person, as a finance person. We are making progress. Is that, okay. Anyone else?
Ms. Ridgway.
Oh, Ms. Ridgway, your turn.
Your name's Lynn Yarwood. This is Lynn, Ms. Ridgway from Rockland, Fairfield, Fairfield Township. I have three committee members that are leaving at the end of the month. And I would like to thank them for serving. And I'd also like to extend an invitation that they are always welcome to come to the meeting and sit with me.
This is all on now?
No.
You're breaking up, Mrs. Ridgway.
Damn, look at this. Thank you already cut me off. I, I could be, anyway, having my problems.
Thank you, Mrs. Ridgway. Thank you.
You can't come back and sit with me. I'll keep a care of what.
It would be my pleasure. Thank you.
Very precious.
Merry Christmas.
Uh, we, the last thing, I guess, is, if anyone else would, yeah, would, of course.
Get the close.
Yeah.
You read a motion and second to close public comment.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second that one.
Somebody's, I think she's in a, uh, is in, is in, look. Uh, hey, one more, good. Derek, go ahead. I, I promise to be quick. But I just wanted to say thank you. In the spirit of all the joy tonight, I wanna shift gears a little bit and sincerely say thank you. There have been members of this board that have been very complimentary towards me and the progress we're making at the jail. But it would be selfish and foolish of me to stand here and hear that without sharing some of that fact. And I'm gonna thank both of the unions that work for me, both the FOP and the PBA, who were forging a partnership that I don't believe existed before. And I think some of what you see, the progress you see, is, is that partnership that we're forming. I wanna also thank the prosecutor. I don't wanna get into much of the detail, and some of it I can't, but we did a joint project here last Friday that involved both the, my staff, the Department of Corrections, New Jersey Department of Corrections staff, and the prosecutor's staff. And I wanted to thank her publicly for, for that assistance. And I think it went, without, again, without going into detail, it went very, very well. And it didn't have to be that way. And lastly, I wanna thank the board, because an idea without backing and an idea without support is just, is just air, and it's just an idea. And while I think we've been able to accomplish some good things at the jail this year, like we couldn't have done it, my staff and I couldn't have done it without your support. I was cautioned when I first came on board that they'll give you everything you want for, for six months, and then good luck. But I'm almost a year, so I've already doubled that. And I can honestly say, all joking aside, that when I needed advice, I got it. When I needed support, I got it. And when I needed resources, I got it. And the success that we're achieving there really is, is a partnership between my staff and this board. So on behalf of my staff, thank you.
See, anyone else? Know what else could I have that motion again to?
Motion to close the public portion?
All in favor? All right. Now, the last thing is, we, any, we'll go around to any committees, anyone wants to make a comment on, that was really important this year, so, let's start.
Sure, I'll start. And normally, it's reports, but this year, in the interest of the last meeting of the year, and getting ready for, for a new year, I'd like to do more resolutions than reports, or requests rather than reports, based off of learned behavior. You know, in education, we, we act based on experience, based on data, based on what we see. And so kind of my year in review, we don't have enough time to go into all that, but the highlight reel is this. I have a little bit of a wish list for next year. The first thing I would like to do is respectfully, Commissioner Johnson, we could, in the new year, perhaps have a resolution adopting a policy for our hiring practices here within the Cumberland County, to be a little bit more open and transparent. You know, we ran on this, we think it's, and I say we, because I, I think I speak for my colleagues, that transparency is important to us. And we, we don't have really active newspapers. We have our broadcasting system, and I know so many people watch. I'm glad that they do, because a lot of information does get to people that normally wouldn't. But I, I would like a resolution prepared with respect to the request for a resolution to be prepared for our meeting in the new year, a resolution adopting a fair and good practice with hiring. And that high, new hires in the county are adopted by a resolution of the board.
We will prepare a resolution that the board can adopt if they choose to do so.
I have a second item for my wish list, that we officially adopt Roberts Rule of Order in the next year by resolution. I'm sure that that is customary, but I would like to officially have that adopted by resolution in the new year.
We will adopt that. We will prepare that resolution also.
And give everybody a comment.
And lastly, no more requests, but rather a thank you. And it has been a pleasure to serve with Commissioner Capazola, Commissioner Musso, and Commissioner Pearson. Thank you for being on board and offering so much of your insight and expertise and knowledgeable history, for sure. So that, that has been very helpful, and it's been a pleasure. And we wish you a happy retirement.
All right.
I just wanna wish everybody, you know, a happy Merry Christmas, and a Happy New Year, and I wish the new board luck. Just remember, you know, remember the small people here making these decisions. And that's it. Good luck, everyone. And to our staff, most amazing staff. So thank you for everything you've done. Really.
So, yeah, I don't have much to add, other than Merry Christmas to you all. But I do wanna thank my wife for this year, and my family for allowing me to represent the county along with the other commissioners. They've done a fine job, along with the administration. I've been a little, this past week, I've been a little off guard. My daughter was pregnant, and she was due the 24th of December, and she came last night at 4:30. So I have a new grandson. This'll be my fifth grandchild. And I've been a little disoriented and not really paying attention to this. I apologize for that. But my family's extremely important to me. But along with that, the county's extremely important to me, too. And I make sure that, he was born 4:30 this morning. I could be there right now at the hospital with my daughter. But it behooves me to be representing the county here first. I could always go along there a little while, or up to the, up to Borges, that's where he is. And there's no direct way to get to Bridgeton from Borges, believe me. But more importantly, I wanna thank everybody. I wanna thank the three commissioners, Carol Dunn, it's gonna be a pleasure, especially me, with you guys, after the past few years, working with you guys has been perfect. Johnny, you've been on board a little while. I wanna thank you for your help, and I wish you all the best of luck. And hopefully, the new commissioners will make rational and very distinct decisions that you'll find that, you know, your sentiments may not be exactly what you think they are. And I wanna thank you all again for coming and spending your time here as well.
Senior board member.
I just wanna mention that. Usually I do.
Oh, sorry.
So, as a senior, as everybody always says, and, and then...
You're like 29, come on.
I know. And then before I keep saying retiring, makes me really annoyed. But I just wanna say thank you to the county, all the employees, all our volunteers for a wonderful 12 years that I've had on this commissioner board. I'm not retiring. Everybody will still see me around. But I could not have done what I've done for 12 years without everybody in this county, whether it's past employees, current employees, again, the volunteers that we have on all our advisory committee meetings. It wouldn't be impossible. I enjoy doing what I'm doing, you know. But I will be back somehow, somewhere, you know, I'm not sure where. I still am very involved in the community. I'm not going away from that, so you'll be seeing me around. And my phone's always open, so if anybody ever needs me, please contact me. If there's any way you need some help, I'll be glad to help. So, and to this commissioner board, it's been great this year being with everybody I met, you know, the past commissioner boards. I've sat down with some great friends, and I have great friends now. I'm looking forward to keeping that friendship. I just wanna wish everybody Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, Happy New Year, and please, you know, everyone stay healthy.
Okay.
Sorry, the evaluation.
This has been very interesting. I had no idea that I would be back on this board. And I ended up back on this board. And I have to tell you, it has been, it's been... Everything they need to serve the people in the county. And I think we all went through COVID. This is the first time we, we served as public servants during COVID. And the job that our board of health did, the job that our human services department did. It was amazing just to watch these professionals work. And it doesn't take away from any other department here, but they were just the ones that I was a direct liaison to. The library is an amazing resource in this county. And I think sometimes we spend so much time talking about these things that, you know, that we, we go back and forth about. We don't talk enough about what the county does to do for people. And I wanna thank them for that. And the staff here, the administrative staff, no matter who's there, they have been amazing and supportive. And they literally answer your calls. And I wanna thank all of you who took that extra 10 minutes to text me on my private cell, because, you know, I did not know where the county cell was. So thank you very much. I appreciate that. And I also wanna thank the people who come to these meetings. This is the car. You're the wheels that make all of this turn. And if people don't participate in our bureaucracy, if they don't participate, then we're just here doing nothing. And I appreciate this county, because there are people who don't come to the meetings, who are really active and involved. I am... I am very happy to have been and worked with you all on this board. It's a different dimension, this is different, but that's what we need. We can't all walk lockstep, we need the debate, we need the discussion. And I love it and I appreciate all of you for it because regardless of what we think or feel, we believe in this county, we believe in these people here. This is what we do. And I'm very proud to have been able to do that. I'll probably forget somebody, but I just want to show, just let you know how much I appreciate all of you and the work that you guys do. And as Carol said, you know, it's retirement day, we had a old pastor who said, "I'm not retired, I refired." We have work to do, all of us, whether we're behind here or on this table, whether we're elected, we have work to do out here. There are people who need your guidance, your support, they need to know that it's okay to stand for something, they need to know that. So once again, thank you all so much. And I thank everybody for the privilege and honor of being able to serve as a, well, freeholder, then a county commissioner. Thank you all, and thank you all for what you do, it's much appreciated.
Well, I'd like to start by thanking our leaders, you know, department heads. I mean, they are really our right hands. You know, we have accomplished a lot this past year. You know, we accomplished, you know, we got contracts, social service, the sheriff department, we're working on the jail. You guys all worked together to make this happen. I mean, it took years to get this done, and we got it done, we got it done. Our prosecutor's office, I jammed, I, I mean, I still go to your building and, you know, I say I'm going to do it, but I, you know, I love you guys, I mean, you did, you've done a great job. Barbara, you know, it's one person I could trust, that I know you always do the right thing, is you. Because I, you know, we very hardly ever talk to each other, but when we do, we are commendating each other's work, you know, and that's a plus. The election board, I mean, you guys done a great job this year, the complaints I've taken, you're, you're, you know, we accomplished a lot, we accomplished a lot, you know. And I'm really proud of all of you guys because you are the backbone at the end of the day, there you are. You know, we have, all of us privately have different jobs, we, and then we get together in a little bit of time, but you're the one that makes it happen. We said we need this, we need this, and you guys do a great job, all of you. And I commendate you. You know, there's not much, there's not a whole lot we could say about you, you guys are all good, I want you to, you're professional. Our staff up front here, you know, I have all the respect in the world for you guys. We go through some tough times, but at the end of the, at the end of the day, we have to go back and say, hey, you know, it's been a tough day, you know, we got through, we, in the positive way, and it's great to have you guys with us. Donna, Commissioner Donna, you know, I talked to you a lot about, that I will miss you, I will miss you. Commissioner Musso, you know, I, we always talk about how we, everybody say, "Watch out for Musso." And we have, you know, we have been through two years without really having an argument or a fight, so.
Yeah, she's real tough.
No, she is not tough, you know, she's, we both, you know, we clicked, you know, in a lot of decisions. We were the top.
Your body's watching, you can't.
We were all able to really click on and work together. Capizola, boy, I can't wait for you to leave. Capizola and I, I consider ourselves friends, and I hate to see him go, I mean, when I see him on the street and he sees me, we hug and we still will, we.
Not after tonight.
Tonight was a difficult night for all of us, but we got to put it behind, we got a new year, we got Christmas coming along, it's time to celebrate, it's time to celebrate. And Tori, it's been wonderful. And you know, we've come a long way, you know, we worked this six years ago starting, so we, we're a team. So is Cilio. I mean, Cilio to me is like a brother, I want you guys to know. He named his grandson after me. His name is Antonio, so you know, I mean.
That's true.
That's true. So, so, you know, we've come a long way, Cilio and I do come a long way, and we share our, and, you know, it's, I look forward to a new year, new things, new tasks, you know. And it's been very wonderful to work with all of yous, you know, and I wish you all a great Christmas. I'm a believer in the Lord, so I won't say holidays, you know, it's Christmas. And I wish you all safe and a prosperous new year. And I thank you.
Thank you. I know you guys, it's a little long night, but it's my chance, it'll probably be the last chance for this, but just we started way back and the first thing this board did is to do the bypass of the culvert that's collapsed. We've got all the permits and we're going to build the, this is, finish that part, that culvert, fix it. But once that culvert bypassed her a little bit, but it got done. We, I set two goals, actually two goals right up the bat, to solve the jail issue, which we, to this point, to this day, today, adopted the agreement with Sale and maybe Gloucester to be, to join as partners in the jail to get us on the right direction and solve it for the long term, 40-year range. And I thank the administration because they really worked hard to get that, the wording right. We also pointed out the, not only that, I set the goal of, we already talked about the middle bias, I'm not going to dwell on that. And the other thing that I wanted to do is expand sewer water to this county. That's, it's been tough going, but we had a good meeting the other night, the townships and the mayors to understand that there's money out there. CCUA is spearheading it, it's doable. Maybe someday in our lifetime it can be done, but we had to start somewhere we had. I set out our number one economic development goal, the Dab Avenue Extension, and working with the city of Bilbo, Fairfield, Lawrence Township, we're rolling on that. It's, it's, it's got, originally it was three to five years, we're down to two to three years to do this project. And all the players have come together, the state officials, the commissioners, the local governments are all working together to get it done because it could be that economic development boom for the western side of the Morris River Township, the Morris River that we haven't had. We've approached, I was approached many times by different, the CDC sticks out nearby, the Commonwealth Development Corporation, to help them, help the township meet some state obligations. This board did it, we created shared service agreements to allow our county to help our townships overcome state, things that the state put up stormwater management. We also, we have a 40-year backlog on doing the mosquito, taking the brush and stuff. Well, we created, not that everybody jumped on it, but we created a shared service agreement that we would train county, township employees to help us. We already have a short staff, but between them and us, we have more people, so we did that. We've looked at, one of our goals is our parks or recreations, that we wanted to create a park system, we're the only county in the state that's got a park system, and we're doing that. We have studies going on in the Morris River and also the Copanty River, the Copanty Greenway, they're underway, and it's being, I even took part in a roundtable discussion, focus group to see what people would like. And you should see the diversity of what people would like to see in these, around these river corridors. And they're here already, we don't have to reinvent the wheel. We put a person in place that's making rules so our park, our only park, is our middle park can be developed, we just cleaned it up, our fair grass is cleaned up, we're going to put ADA compliant stage, we're going to do, as tonight, we're doing trails, we're looking about four or more, we're creating the rules so people can lease and rent them. Parks does not need, it doesn't bring in money. We began that process here. I thank Stan Fields that we are leaders in the cybersecurity group that was created by him, but was joined by many others, including different counties, to get involved that for the first time that we're looked as, and I say leaders because we are leaders here, but people are getting to know that we do things, that we tried stuff and people responded to that. I thank our prosecutor because she instituted, which I was skeptical, but I'm not anymore, we have a problem, our homelessness is, has, we have a homeless problem that's made up of many things, mental health, mental problems, drug addiction, it's not just homelessness. And our officers face problems that sometimes they can't, they need help dealing with. And now she put together a program that our mental health professionals are involved with it, and again, I'd say I'm skeptical, but when you're in the room and the officers go, this is good because they're there and they can help me deal with, when they're rolling up to a scene, they have no idea. And that's only for a while. I think actually we'll be trading our people shortly, we're actually rely on traders, but we have enough people now, we're going to start trading our own people. So I only mentioned that, but there are many other things you're leaning on which makes this county look good. And I say look good, I mean, it pulls us together that we're tackling our problems. And there are other people, there's divisions heads that are here that deal with it every day, that, so I commend them because they face the problems that many people don't see, and they do it, and they work with their people to do it. And we were here for most of the year with DOS, the contracts, and they had to deal with, we got it done. And we'll continue to work with them, and our commissioners have been real active to hear their needs and make sure this board is always listening. And not to undermine management, but to enhance management's ability to, there is an issue that they have another ear, maybe relay and work with them. I am very proud to be on the library board, Commissioner Pearson is a big proponent. We got a whole, we built up our library and redesigned it to fit today's presently, what a library could be and may be. In addition, maybe expansion in the future shortly, it's coming soon, into a township that doesn't have any library facility, it may be enhanced the literacy this county sorely lacks. The literacy problem is a problem that we have to deal with, and maybe by having libraries action and part of this, and maybe our libraries talk and make it a center point, we can tackle this problem along with our schools. We are fortunate to have one of the best schools, one of the better schools at all our schools, and raised up their game. But I say CC10, but I happen to be in Bilbo when they opened their whole new wing onto their, their high school, years in the making, but they've come, they pushed the envelope, they moved forward, so it's not this Bilbo, even Cobo Regional, the violent are all stepping up their D U B, they have to, and making us better. And I take, and I'll just say that we've had a piece of that, this commission has done a piece of that by doing our stuff, doing we, and hopefully in the future, we're going to have programs that we do that after school programs at our schools and help the kids have a place to go and not reinvent the wheel of a community center, but use what we have already. And I'm looking forward to working with our prosecutor who seems to be the catalyst for everybody together. We have a lot of things to go, we're nowhere near where we need to be, but I very, I appreciate the commissioners that left to be, take some of my off-the-wall things you guys took in stride and we made it happen, or you had questions, we did, we, Mr. Pearson kind of bickered a little bit with Todd, but I like, actually, you know, I like that we go back and forth because it makes me think, and I appreciate that. And I, you know, wish you luck in what you're going to do, I know you do, you're busy already. I know Carol, you're into everything, so I can't, so. Yeah, I'll see you around. John, you know, also you're involved in everything too, you're, I see you different places, and I know you're going to continue to do that. So we're going to move on, we have a board coming in, I think it's going to be pretty special, they're going to do a lot of good things, they already have some good ideas of what they're going to tackle, and I think we're going to push this county forward like we've been doing this year, and just keep it rolling. We all win, we all win if the county hit, we tackle each problem and work on it, so. I wish everybody Merry Christmas. It's a good season, so, and I want to thank the staff, sometimes I don't want to say things perfectly, but I do appreciate the staff, the many phone calls I make over and over and over again, and how you get back to me. It's the only way I can really communicate, time is tough sometimes, but they always seem to open their doors and address what I, the concerns I have or what I say. And I don't, I do appreciate that, even sometimes I don't always say that you do that. So just keep up the good work that you guys do. I think cooney, everybody, mostly everybody here is in some department, the work you guys do, maybe the commissioners don't always talk to you, but because you guys do, we don't have to worry about it, so I do appreciate the job you do and the people who pull this county together. I know you guys have been doing this a long time, so thank you. All right, so Merry Christmas, Stan. Have a good night. Second. All in favor?
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.